Okay, staff, I think we're gonna go ahead and start. We've got four people here. So, welcome, those of you that are here. We are here to discuss the fifteen properties that were deferred on our last go around pending research. And so, staff is gonna share with us what they found. Are you doing this, Kelly?
Yes. Okay. Thank you. That was like fifty dollars. Awesome. Oh. Great. Who would spread the council? Hello. You're not trying to seem like a fucking secretary. Forum? Do we run away to? So. Oh. So, that's the thing that we gotta, that's what we gotta do. Yeah. Okay. Oh, we're gonna have to say. So. Oh, I don't think. So, that's the thing that we gotta, that's what we gotta do. Yeah. Yeah. So. How is this? We know what he said. Yes. Oh. So, this one goes. No. That's my whole point. That's my whole point right there. I bet your whole, she put it down today for what she has. It wasn't, uh, easy. Okay. So. This is now. I don't know if this works. I don't know. It all. I think. I was in the bed and waking up at six. Myself. I think that's why. I think that's why. Uh? There's something. I think that's why. I'm sorry. I was in the bed and waking up at six. Myself. I think that's why. I think that's why. Yeah. I'm not sure. It doesn't sound, it doesn't sound. Uh. That's what we should have. 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 I think. You're showing me something. What are some of these? Why do we talk about your campaign? Okay. That's. Really good show. I'm sorry. Really good show. I'm sorry. 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 I'm sorry.
Okay, staff, I think we're gonna go ahead and start. We've got four people here. So, welcome, those of you that are here. We are here to discuss the fifteen properties that were deferred on our last go around pending research. And so, staff is gonna share with us what they found. Are you doing this, Kelly?
Yes, I am.
So, we'll let Kelly start.
Gladly.
Uh, this is intended to be a discussion between council and staff. We do have a comment period at the beginning of the council meeting if you want to inject something in the meantime. So, we'll go ahead and start with a presentation by Kelly.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Like the mayor stated, this is us going through the deferred properties. We as staff have gone through them one by one. Basically, the way we're gonna do this, I just have aerial imagery of each of these requests. We'll go through kinda generally what the residents were requesting, and then if there are any utilities or just basically anything that's in the resolution criteria that may or may not comply. I left, I printed out the actual resolutions that have the policy that the council approved. You should each have a packet in front of you that has that criteria. Just really quickly, this is the criteria. I kinda bolded and underlined very quickly just the basics. Basically, if it's part of a trail corridor, the council said they wouldn't sell. If it adds to the open space feel of an open space subdivision, they wouldn't sell. If the city needed it potentially for the future, we wouldn't sell. And then if it caused or resulted in increase of irrigable acreage, that would unduly strain or burden the city's PI system, pressurized irrigation system, then the city wouldn't sell. Created orphan parcels, if it was included in that five-foot buffer along a trail, the city wouldn't sell. And then if it created issues of access, connectivity, usability, et cetera. Okay, so just starting out, this is one of the requests. This is in Platte, Beacon Hills, Platte I. This is just along the city's border. If you just look, kinda give you some perspective as to where this is, just north of it is the Blue Bison property, and then the city has a thin strip of land just north of these lots. Oh, you're okay. Really quickly, this is from MAGS, Mountain Land Associations of Governments, Transplan forty for trails. They have it in different segments, basically phase one, phase two, phase three, and then their vision. And so, this is just incorporated in the vision trails. And so, this is, they're showing the Bonneville Shoreline Trail connecting through and then going north. And then this is our Trails Master Plan as part of the city's general plan. We have that. Can you like put a laser pointer or a mouse or whatever right there? You're okay. This right here, where Erin's circling, is just, that's where this request is. And so, technically, we do have a plan for a trail to go through or connect through in some way. We only point that out because right now, for that connection, that strip is the only piece of public land we have. Both north of that land and south of that land is private property. And so, basically, staff's recommendation on that one is to, because we are doing a comprehensive general plan update this upcoming year, maybe the next year or two, however long it takes us to do, but that's something that we would look more into, and the council could look more into the Trails Master Plan and see if that's something that y'all would want to update or change or find another way to connect that. I guess, Mayor, how should we do this? Do y'all wanna have your discussion after each property, or do we go through all of them, or?
There's limited, so let's, I would ask council to just make notes, and then we can go back through.
Okay.
Otherwise, we might get stuck and not through all of them.
That's right.
So, let's get through all of them.
Go on.
And if questions come up during the discussion, council's welcome to comment, but let's try and, if there aren't questions, just move on to the next one.
Okay, sounds good. This is also part of Beacon Hills, Beacon Hills, Platte I. This is the Twin Bridges area. The biggest thing on this one, so these residents requested, where you see those red stars, those were the formal requests that we received. And then that yellow circle is just a resident that came in about a week or so ago and spoke with me and the mayor about their concern with it and wanting to maintain access to that open space area behind, because two of those requests would have blocked their access to the open space. As staff, we had Tavis, who's our consultant engineer that deals with our water modeling, look into the PI system for this area. This is called, this basically the Hogs Hollow Pump Station is what services this area that I have outlined in red, which includes that whole Twin Bridges area. And so, basically, just to give you a little bit of background, which I learned all of this over the last twenty-four hours, this system is designed to be a two-pump system. And then we have a third pump that is meant for emergencies and peak hours, basically, but for emergencies. And that two-pump design was intended for, to last us till build-out. Build-out is anticipated. We still have about twenty or so homes that are to be built in this area, which with an average of like point three acres of irrigable land comes out to be about six acres that still needs to be irrigated once we reach build-out. And looking at this, we also did a really quick calculation of about how much encroachment is in this area. When I say really quick, it was really quick, but it came out to be about three acres within this area of encroachment that is being irrigated. And this is, this is what was included in the staff report. Basically, this just shows the water flow of that PI system. This is pulled from data from ten days in the middle of July. That green line that you see is kinda showing the two-pump capacity, which is at about six hundred and ninety gallons per minute. And then, the blue line at the very top is a thousand gallons per minute, and that's with the third pump. That's with the third pump's full capacity. Like I said, this is designed to only be a two-pump system. And so, you can see already this summer in July during peak times, we did go over and have to use that third pump several times within those last ten days. And we're anticipating that once we do reach build-out, and also once we use the meters, hoping that that might encourage less water usage, or also hoping that residents don't water during peak hours, that that might flatten it out. And we're still planning on keeping this as a two-pump system. These are the options that Tavis gave to us as possible solutions, not necessarily solutions, but just options that the council could look into. But just request that residents don't water during peak times, which basically is watering during the day, or run the station as is, which what Tavis notes would likely decrease pressures, causing residents to increase watering times and potentially use more water. Or replace the pumps we have to a higher capacity, which this could be about between twenty and fifty thousand extra dollars. Or the city council could just wait until build-out, and when metering is set in, to go back and review the system and see what we could do in the future. This is also on that same Hogs Hollow Pump Station that's being serviced. There were two requests associated with this, with this area. There is, which I took up that little screenshot from the as-built that show that water line, and so on the plat, there's a fifty-foot wide water line easement that goes a little bit into the private property, but then curves, well, I guess like southwest. That little yellow triangle, that's what the staff is, basically, staff is just recommending that we don't sell anything that's within that easement. Like I said, that yellow triangle, it's still incorporated with that Hogs Hollow Pump Station. So, basically, the overall recommendation for all of these properties, whether the council decides to sell or doesn't decide to sell, is that the PI issue be addressed, pressurized irrigation issue be addressed, because it's obviously by these numbers an issue now. And then also to note, to not sell the property that's within that fifty-foot wide easement. And then, the last recommendation is that the city council come up with a citywide policy for encroachment so we can deal with these PI issues as well. Next, Highland Hills, Platte A. So, this is, as you can see, those are the along Jupiter Circle, those are some property sales that went through a couple of years ago. On the east side of that trail, we do have a twenty-four-inch storm drain line. That star is the resident that requested. But he has, he has been in contact with us and has notified us that he has spoken with all of his neighbors that are along there, and that they are also interested in purchasing. But basically, he's been working with the city engineer, with Andy as well, to kinda figure out what would be possible with the location of the storm drain line. And he actually hired out a surveyor to see where exactly the line is or was behind his property. So, this is kinda just an example of what staff is okay with. So, that purple line at the top is the location of the storm drain line. And what staff would like to do if the council did decide to sell is to maintain ten feet of property off of that storm drain line, just to provide us enough space for maintenance. This is just a quick cross-section example as to why we would need ten feet. That way, we could get in there fine without having to, without messing with anybody's fences or properties that are relatively close to the storm drain line. So, that's, that's that staff recommendation. Just like I said, ten feet off that storm drain line, that's what we're okay with.
Can you go back to the picture of the homes?
Oh, this one?
Um, one more forward. Is, that's the last home in that set of homes?
So, the last home, it's what, what's on the right of the screen is the northernmost home. So, the starred one is the one that has that little blue strip showing. I got the survey. Highland Hills, Platte B. This is one y'all did review with the previous set. Well, obviously, you reviewed all of these, ignore me. The one on the north side was actually denied by the council. This is, this was my mistake, along with the two hundred emails that I got all at the same time, but I, I missed this request that was just south of it. So, basically, it's me bringing back to the council, just in case having two consecutive properties changed y'all's mind. But the residence request is just up to the sidewalk, is what was included in their request. Our recommendation is just to consider that criteria that's in the resolution. If you feel like it adds to the open space feel, whatever it may be, that would be the council's decision. Highland Hills, Platte C. We actually, we did receive requests from all these property owners. One of them just put all of their names onto one request, and then the request on the south is the one that we've had the most contact with. But the biggest thing with this one, again, familiar with, that storm drain line is on the eastern side. This is, would be a similar approach to the sales along Jupiter Circle, where there is a sprinkler main that's behind those properties, and so that would have to be relocated. But the biggest thing with this is just the major slope. This is just a screenshot from Google Earth. I don't know if you can really see it. Can you? Right there is the trail. And then, if they sold, if y'all sold five feet from the trail, it's basically selling that hill to these property owners. And our recommendation is obviously that sprinkler main would have to be addressed. And then, the biggest concern is just making sure that these property owners would be able to maintain that drainage onto their property and not having it all flow onto the trail or onto our city property or onto the properties down south. And then, Mountain View Acres, this was one where the resident was requesting some of that property. That's the open space in the Hidden Pond subdivision. Staff's biggest concern with it is where the wetlands boundary is, which that plat is what shows it. It's kinda tough to see. It might be easier to see on y'all's screen. But that's just where we recommend that the city not sell what is incorporated within the wetland boundary. Windsor Meadows, this is something, we received one request. There were those other, I think, six requests that were approved, that were north of the trail, right here. Can you do that? Those were the approved ones, which all of them have signed purchase contracts as of now, so that's nice. Like the first one where all of them have bought. But the biggest thing, we understood that council, when they discussed this before, were hoping to look at Windsor Meadows as a subdivision as a whole and decide, I mean, what trails were necessary, what open space was necessary. And so, that's just what we recommend, really, whether it be in this meeting or in a future meeting, that y'all look at Windsor as a whole and see what you think you could sell or what not to sell. We don't really have much of a recommendation on that, honestly, as staff. And also, just considering the criteria that y'all already approved and looked at. But that's, that's the rest of it. There were, that, the, okay, there are two requests. One in Mercer Hollow that the resident pulled because it was under Rocky Mountain Power lines. And once we received the response about Rocky, Rocky Mountain Power's restrictions to what he would be able to do with the property, he emailed us and said he was no longer interested. And then, the one in Viewpoint, where the original request was on both sides of the trail, when I told him that council wasn't interested in selling, interested in selling north of the trail, and they would look at south, he said he wanted to pull and would look into applying in a future year. So, that's that. I'm done.
Okay, council, do you wanna take them in groups and talk about them? We also should include in the discussion, a discussion about encroachment, specifically, I'm using Beacon Hills as an example. If you can go to the one where there are three homes plus a fourth.
Sorry, just take me a second. I'm like, can we actually, wait, I'm almost there.
That one. When I looked at that, you were at the right one before.
No, it just.
Oh.
It was thinking, and then, can we like just pull up?
Anyway, those, those three properties there that want to buy, you can see on two of them, they've already, there's been encroachment because the grass, there's green there, and the other one isn't. there and the other one isn't. When I looked up the hill north of that, up to where the road cuts across, sixteen of the eighteen properties had encroachment, and a fair number of them had hardscape, concrete curbing, or retaining walls built already. So I don't, I don't think you can either decide to sell or not sell without deciding on encroachment, because if you say, yes, we'll sell it, then is it fair for these three or four homeowners to pay for something that the other people are getting for free? That's not right. And if you decide not to sell, then, okay, you're not going to let them buy it, what are you going to do with the people that have already approached?
So mayor, what you're saying is either they all need to come in and we treat all, if you want to say fifteen, similar where they all can buy?
There's eighteen homes on that.
Eight, all eighteen there could buy at one time. You'll say, hey, we need to have all eighteen buy, or there, or, or the problem is what you're saying, okay, you have two or three who have not encroached that have come and tried to conform with the city code, but you have another fifteen, or maybe it was a ten that have encroached that didn't fit, and why would they ever come back in?
Correct. So two of the, like on the, on those three red stars, two of them have already encroached, but they've come and said, we want to, we want to buy, we want to do it the right way. Um, the others that have already encroached haven't approached us. Yes, Tim?
Were they aware that they were encroaching when they added the improvements to the land?
Um, I can't tell you whether they were or not. I know, I did speak with one resident who has since moved over where Brandon lives, and he said he was the first one that actually improved city space, and he had talked to the city, and the city agreed that as long as he didn't put anything permanent, that he could improve it. So he put above-ground sprinklers in with the black pipe and heads, and then he said other people started doing it. I don't believe any of them approached the city, and their improvements were more permanent. So, um, whether or not they know, I can't read into the minds, I would expect that they did. Um, but you have an issue, right? And I, and so I think you just have to come up with a decision, okay, how are we going to deal with people that have already encroached?
Have we determined whether all those properties are sellable? Because I know we do have that policy where if it is sellable and they're encroaching, then they have to lease the land if they don't want to buy it.
Um, it looks to me like, i- it's sellable if the council chooses to sell it. There, there's no infrastructure that would prevent it from being sold.
Have we been maintaining back behind these homes? I don't think we've been.
No.
So, so mayor, now let's, let's jump what we did do. So in Canterbury North, we had some people that had encroached by the trail there. We didn't go and say, hey, you encroached, we're not going to sell to you. I'm just saying, you know, as we come here, we, we let those individuals in Canterbury North purchase. Is that, am I thinking correctly?
Yeah, we had determined that, um, that was sellable land, and then we approached them and said, hey, this is sellable land. You have the option of purchasing it. If you are encroaching, then you will need to lease.
Correct. Okay, and that's, and that, we did the same thing up in Viewpoint.
Did we do that?
Is that how we handled it? We, I think we said everything along the Murdoch Canal Trail was sellable, and it was up to, and then I think we did say, if they don't buy, and they did encroach, then they've got to remove their encroachment. I know we did that up in Viewpoint when I read the minutes up there.
I, I remember that discussion. I don't remember a solid leasing policy.
I don't know if there's a leasing policy.
We, I don't believe we've set one.
Yeah, we, we might want to discuss that more, because we talked about leasing, but I don't think we said a policy.
We didn't, we didn't say, we, it was discussed, but there was no decision made. So I don't, I, staff did not approach anybody with that. And then, up there on Canterbury North, there is an area where there's intended to be a trail where both neighbors have encroached, and we did not offer them to buy that, but we haven't talked with them about dealing with the encroachment.
Correct. Do we, yes.
Do we know if any of these people have maintenance agreements?
They do not.
None of them do.
No.
So, mayor, are you recommending that we deal with all eighteen property owners at one time, letting them be where, that they could maybe buy up to so, so much up to the Scrub Oak? Is that what you're recommending, or was it you're recommending here?
Here, here's my thought process. Okay, the city allowed the encroachment to happen, and it's been happening over years. Um, so elected officials are to blame, not staff, because I know staff has approached council several times on the issue, and the council has just punted. So I think it's really hard, after a long period of time where people have put permanent encrochements, to ask them to remove them.
Yeah.
Um, so I think you need to sell, but then they all have, I think it's, you all have to buy, and it, I don't know if you deal with a simultaneous close or how that's done. Um, the, but even with that in place, a- as I've looked at the encroachments, I, I don't see anywhere they have structures other than playground, but any like sheds or pools or any significant concrete structures there. Um, part of the value of living there was that open field back there. So you could, as a council, say, all right, if you want to put fencing or, or buildings, you can put it within your original property envelope, but what you're buying now is intended to maintain an open field, so you could say, no above-ground structures. You can put gardens in, you, you can put grass, but no above-ground structure.
I mean, that was one of my concerns as I went, you know, there's that little mountain bike area back in there, and I was worried, okay, if we allow them to come within five feet, do they also start putting bigger structures? And it takes that kind of, that fill of that mountain bike area that's down in that bottom area, and that comes up and down in that area.
That, that's an approach you could take, and that would, in my view, be somewhat, some, some, what of a compromise. Now, when you take that approach, you have to have a commitment that if people violate that, because you could have a new homeowner come in and say, okay, this is my property, and not know that there are constraints on it. I mean, I think some of these properties-
It's a French country state. It was called a no-build zone, but they still build on it.
Yes, yes. So it just has to be monitored closely, and you have to have, you, you should have a policy that allows staff to, to deal with it when it comes. Um, if it's there, then if people come for a permit to build, like a fence or an above-ground structure, um, they would catch that, but we know people don't always come with permits for a fence, um, or whatever. Uh, that, that would be-
What's everyone else feel? I'm amiable to, you know, to look to, if there's eighteen property owners to sell up to a certain area of the Scrub Oak. I like what you're talking about, mayor, maybe there's some building restrictions that they can't, you know, build, you know, any structure above ground, uh, in, you know, there, you know, or, you know, any fencing, because it does keep that as more of an open field. What does the rest of the council feel?
I'm in agreement with you all, so I think my only concern is the PI issue of putting a cavite in there that you need to water during off-peak or-
I forgot, we do have pressurized irrigation issues up here.
Yeah, so what was the, what was the staff recommendation for that PI issue? I think it was the next slide. Do you have one on that? Residents water during non-peak hours to flatten the curve.
I've heard flatten the curve before.
And I mean, if we have to replace the pumps to a higher capacity, cost estimate twenty to fifty thousand, I, I mean, we could take the money that was used for those cells and put it towards that, but-
You would, you would want to, if, you would want to say, we would need to hold some of that money in reserve.
Yeah.
Because right now the policy is it goes back into the park, right?
Yeah.
But that would be consistent with an infrastructure change required, that it would, it'd come out of the funds. So I would, I, I think that would be a reasonable, let's say, set aside fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah, if we need to replace those pumps, but definitely let residents know to water during non-peak hours. What do you think, Scott?
Well, I agree with that. I'm just, I've been here thinking, if, if all these people buy the property, if you can really tell them that they can't do anything with it if they own it. How, how do you do that?
This comes, Scott, this is the French country estates. Remember when French country estates had that?
Yeah, I, I can't forget that one.
I, I, no, but I'm just saying, that's the same issue we're creating here, is a no-build zone, like in French country estates, and it, it has caused conflict.
Well, that no-build zone was a compromise with the neighborhood to the south, though. I just, I just guess, I think we have to be careful as we tread this.
What's your recommendation?
I mean, we want to sell it to you, but don't do anything with it. And I, I think you have to be careful.
What would be your recommendation here? I'm just, we're trying to keep the open field. If you'd be up in that area, there's that mountain bikes, they kind of come up and down. I'm just worried if someone builds right on that thing with the, it changes that, that fill there.
I think all those residents like that open field, if you see it all.
That's why they built there.
That, yeah, that is why they built there. They like having those trails right behind their house. They don't want to put fencing in. Um, it would change the fill, absolutely, of that area, to fence right up to that trail in Scrub Oak.
Nathan, I have a question, or Kelly, or anybody. We have a policy, if I'm not, by ordinance, that you need to retain all water that you, that comes from your property onto your property.
All the drainage, uh-huh.
So once we sell that there, it would be illegal for water to drain from their property down into the hollow. They would find, have to find a way. How do you do that when it's sloped like that?
Andy, do you know?
Well, they would have to more or less create a little reservoir or drainage basin at the edge of it, right? They'd have to dig a little retention basin of sorts, uh, along their property, uh, boundary on the lower side, and, and direct the water to that. Or they could put kind of, uh, you know, an underground sump, if you will, uh, you know, on the back.
So each individual property owner would need to do that?
That's the way to keep the ordinance.
Are we looking to sell where it starts to go down the hill, though? I think it's going to all be up on the top.
No, it all goes down. Go back to the property. See where the property lines are. Everything to the west of that yellow line is downhill into the gully there.
I thought, I thought there was a flat area right there.
It's a flatter area, but it slopes down.
Okay.
I mean, it's, it, it, in some cases, it's, it's a modest slope, but it definitely, the water isn't going to flow uphill. Then maybe towards, on the top end, it's more flat, but in that area there, it's, it's downhill.
Well, we're on the first property. We figured anything out?
So I don't know. Is it possible to do a detention basin for all of the properties on the south somewhere? Like you do in a, in a subdivision?
You could. I mean, it, it would be possible. It'd be, in my mind, simpler to have each property owner deal with it, and kind of create a little berm or retention basin on their, on their lot.
Okay.
Uh, if you start to look, finding them, you start growing, and then who, whose lot gets the big basin?
Yes.
What, what's the natural flow that happens there right now? Mayor, are you worried if they start sprinkling, that it's going to get a lot more? Are you worried, you know, because right now-
I'm just, I'm pointing out that we have a, a code thing that they would all be in violation of unless they address that. And so the question was, how would they address it?
I think so. It depends if it's a heavy rain, I mean, you know, what, what the water's coming from, because if they kind of have some-
A berm would, would do that, right? You just put a berm in?
Well, yeah, they could do a berm. Like I said, they might have to put a little underground French drain or something of that nature. I mean, you probably got off of all of them, those that have encroached right now, it probably does, you know, when they overwater or things, or, or heavy rains, it probably rolls into the, into the city's property right now. But to stop that and be compliant with the ordinance, yeah, kind of a, a berm slash small basin or French drain type, uh, of catchment would do it for each of the lots.
So we would need to enforce that on those that have already encroached as well. Now, if you look at the southmost property, it, their encroachment involves, you can see how they've gone in and out of the, uh-
The Scrub Oak.
The Scrub Oak. So they've cleared out some of the Scrub Oak and, and put in, uh, concrete curbing.
And, and to be fair with them, the Scrub Oak could also be a fire concern if it's too close to their house.
What do you guys think? Eighteen properties?
Huh?
Do you want to?
Well, the, really, okay, so really going up, where is the property lines? I wish I could see where all their property lines were at.
They'll, you can kind of see from there.
Can all eighteen still buy, or is it really just this south end that would be, you know, where we could sell as a city? That's what I'm saying, is there really that much ground to the north that's sellable?
Yes, there is. They've all, they've all encroached up from the, from about, well, from that, the, the top left red dot all the way up, there's been some encroachment. You can just tell on almost all of them. Say, look, you've got that concrete curbing.
How close do we want to let them go up to the Scrub Oak? Do you want to go ten? Five, ten?
I, I don't know that you can do a blanket policy, because some of them have already encroached into the-
Scrub Oak.
And there is an issue that those that have been watering, have been watering for years without paying for it, and-
So then when that water meter comes, they'll pay for it?
Yes, right now, you pay for it because you paid by the square foot of your property. So they have encroached for years, some of them, and have been watering, and we can't get that back, but you could say, I'm going to charge a ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty percent premium on the price.
So if we then say, let's sell all eighteen, seven of them don't want to buy, what do we do about that? Are we going to do the lease policy, or do we require all to buy?
That would be a policy we'll have to come up with. If they don't buy, the problem is if they don't buy and don't enter the lease, then what do we do? Because if someone that doesn't answer at all, you know, if they're encroached, then you're going to have to give them a notice to remove their encroachment.
Yes.
And, and that's what we're talking about, is you're going to have to, I, I'm okay working something out here where they can buy up to a certain, you know, the question is, do we let them buy into the Scrub Oak, or is it only those available to purchase where it's up to Scrub Oak? I think that's where, as a council, you know, I, I'm very nervous about selling the Scrub Oak, because I do think that's part of that fill.
No, I would not want to sell that Scrub Oak, because that trail is within the Scrub Oak, sometimes just a few feet into it.
Kelly, aren't there a couple on the other side on Wildflower also?
Yeah.
On the south side there.
Is everyone else?
Ten feet.
Well, I want to look, because I think there are a couple on the opposite side on Wildflower, which is the other side of that ravine, isn't it?
Happen?
Those are the ones where you, there's a, there is an easement, there's a, there's that one triangle that you could sell.
Ten feet then? I think we'd be okay going up to ten feet at the Scrub Oak.
Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I agree with you. I think if someone has taken advantage of that situation, they've encroached, and they need to pay a premium, because we need to recoup expenses.
So-
So I'm, I'm going to, let's assume that their encroachment was they went and built a little fire thing. I was thinking maybe one of those, maybe just had, they didn't maybe add any grass, but they just went and put a little fire thing. So they haven't, and I'm, and it's going to be different with each property owner. But they, they went and just put like a little fire thing down in that, in behind their house, but we're going to classify that as encroachment, because maybe they went and put benches or something, but they're not using water. Now, we can see there's a ten percent, twenty percent premium for any encroachers, so it sends a signal, don't encroach. But is that where we at?
Don't worry. Are you happy?
So let's kind of get this, but, so where, is everyone kind of being okay with ten feet of the Scrub Oak?
Yeah, I'm good. Ten feet Scrub Oak, all the properties, and then let's do our lease policy.
What do you think about the premium for encroachers?
I mean, I, I am not for a premium for encroachers, because the city has allowed it.
Have, have we allowed, I don't know, have we allowed it, we passively allowed it?
We've not, we've not, we've not enforced it. This came up four years ago, that we had two hundred and twenty properties encroached.
We knew it was going to-
We actually said, send a letter out, and my, my understanding, Nathan, do you know if a letter ever went out to these? So I'm just saying, and I understand, I understand the, the thought process, hey, some of, you know, encroached upon, past their property, but what have we done as a new owner coming in? What have we done to discourage it? Is that what you're saying, Kim? What, what have we done?
I think it's, it's both faults. We haven't done anything to send a, a precedent that we care about encroaching, and so it's almost like, well, the city doesn't care, so I guess it's fine. You know, they've looked the other way, they know it done it.
I just think it's a backward way of looking at it. Just because we don't enforce it, doesn't mean that the ordinance or the law doesn't exist. It exists, and then they encroached. Just because we, we can choose to enforce it whenever the heck we want. So let's enforce it now, but-
What, so what's the council think?
What, I mean, is, there's no, there's no legal precedent or legal basis to not charge a premium, but, I don't think, but- What, I mean, is, there's no, there's no legal precedent or legal basis to not charge a premium, but, I don't think, but.
We could charge water recovery for what you're saying or something like that?
Right, exactly. A water recovery fee. It's not our job to pay for you to maintain your encroachment, but.
I, I just think it's hard to know how much they've encroached, what water they're using.
No, that's, that's, we'll just get an estimate from the engineering group and, and then do it that way, but.
We can't even know how many years they've been encroaching, how much property has it been. I, I, I just feel like those are arbitrary numbers that we just can't pick, figure it out.
Well, most numbers that we impose are arbitrary, like the sound ordinance, that's pretty darn arbitrary. And a, a lot of things that we do are arbitrary, but it's our job to, to make a decision, to get the best data that we can, and then make a decision and draw a line, but it sounds like I'm outvoted.
Oh, not necessarily. You have to hear from two other council people.
I, I think, I think it is important to say, look, if you do it the right way, you get rewarded. If you haven't, then there should be some penalty, cause they've essentially stolen water. They have stolen property. They have not paid property taxes on property they're using if it's their own. And I, I know that none of that goes through anybody's mind who's doing that, right? But.
I don't know.
You, you have fines for all kinds of things, like speeding has a fine, right? And, and if you violate an ordinance, there's a fine. If you don't resolve it, you can be fined. So, I.
What does the other end think?
One thing, one thing Scott.
I guess we're the other end.
Not sure how I feel about that.
As you make this, continue this discussion, one thing you should be aware of is we already have sold property to individuals who have encroached. And so, this would be something different than the ones you previously decided on.
That's why I was mentioning over in Canterbury North, there was encroachers that we said, okay, and we didn't put a premium on them.
That's what I'm saying. From here on out, let's say it's sellable, they can buy it, but, you know, we can start looking at that premium and, and enact that from here.
What do you mean, from here on out? You're talking next year? If we have encroachers come in, then we're gonna be seeking a premium?
Yeah.
I say we, we still charge for the water, but.
Is it backwards to be trying to think of a policy that fits these homes? Does it make more sense to come up with, like we did for the other sales? A policy for encroachments and, like, maintenance agreements and then apply them to these applications? I feel like we're doing this backwards.
So, share with us. Let's walk through what you're talking about, just.
Well, I feel like we have to figure out what we're going to do with encroachments, and we have to figure out what we're gonna do with maintenance agreements. And so, if we go through and make a decision on, on these properties without having a policy that we're looking at, I think then the next time we do this, we have the same problem going forward, is we allowed A, B, or C. And so, now what are we gonna do? I think it makes more sense to make a policy like we did with the open spaces. We had all those criteria that we looked at, and then we applied them to this. Is there a way that, I mean, I know everything's a little bit individual, but if we had a general policy and then applied it to this, rather than trying to create a policy?
So, the, the policy that Nathan came up with, and we've got five minutes left, but, was something along the lines of, you can lease, you have to establish the lease price for a number of years. Or you can buy, or if you choose neither of those two, then you have to remove your, whatever you've done to encro, whatever improvements you've made when you encroached.
Yeah, that was based on purchase or encouraging the purchase, that was the idea.
Cause you, if, if it's purchasable, we wanna, we want them to buy.
In this specific area, you know, staff would like some direction on how to handle the PI issue moving forward, if you do choose to sell it.
So, I believe staff, council, correct me if I'm wrong. Council felt like we set aside the amount of money, the worst case amount of money it would cost to upgrade the pumps to accommodate the increased flow requirements, and, and set that aside as targeted money for this particular issue from this. Then, the remainder goes into the, the open spaces, park capital improvement. You'll get enough with just a couple of the properties buying.
Cause you said it's about seven and a half, is that right, Kelly? Seven and a half acres?
No, I, there are about three acres of encroachment. If you were to sell, sell to all these eighteen properties, and that, that three acres was also including that strip up north. But, so that three acres, so three times the forty-three, five, sixty, times two point seven four.
That have already encroached, not the ones that are asking to buy. So, how much, how much acreage is on those three, three, four requests?
You'd, you'd get about three hundred and fifty thousand.
If, if all eighteen.
If all of them purchased, yes.
All of the ones that asked to purchase?
No, no, if all eighteen purchased.
That's all eighteen.
If we got all three acres, if we got all three acres.
Well, that's, three acres have already been encroached. There's some that hasn't been encroached.
Kelly, Kelly.
That, that was just based on, like, in order to upgrade the PI system. Like, you would get about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars if you sold all of that property, which the PI system, if we're assuming it's gonna cost about fifty thousand dollars.
You have money to spare.
I'm fine with that.
You're fine, I just wanna make sure when you say, you're fine if we do the sell for the, for the PI issue that's being raised. The money would be put into a capital account. The first money in goes to the capital account to help with the, the upgrade, the P, the PI system.
Yes.
I can support that too.
Okay.
Okay, and if we're gonna do that, I would suggest that you ask staff to then evaluate the property and identify areas to be sold, and then you can approve that at the next meeting.
Yeah, I, I agree. And, and I think we want to stay within ten feet of the Scrub Oak.
Yeah.
Can, can I ask Rob a quick question?
Yeah, please.
Rob, do you think that there is some sort of a, a legal precedent that we cannot charge a premium for land that's been encroached upon, whereas we haven't done so before? Could they come and say, the precedent you've set is that you haven't charged a premium? So, now you wanna charge a premium to us, because we've encroached on the land and the city wants to recover, let's say, a water usage? Is there some sort of a legal basis for that argument? Or we can do what we want? And when we say we, I mean, the city can, we can do what we want.
The council, right. And make sure I understand, by premium, talking about a water rate premium?
I, I'm thinking of a way to recoup money that the city has spent, because people have encroached. So, if they have encroached, would it be possible, let's say we take those eighteen properties, let's say twelve of them have encroached and six haven't, we charge a premium to the twelve that have encroached?
I guess, what would happen is the city would issue a notice of saying, either you're going to get off or you're going to pay essentially a lease or some kind of rent to the city for our property that you're using. And we would be within our rights to do that and say, you have the choice of either not trespassing or misusing the city property or paying this to gain this benefit from it.
I'm referring to something retroactive. You've used the land without permission. You've used city water without permission to, to irrigate that land, so now we're gonna recoup that upon sale.
Sorry, so just impose them a, a charge just for the use of it for the historical.
Yeah, exactly. Retroactively adding that as a premium to that property that's been encroached upon.
What Rob was thinking, I think that would be hard to enforce, cause you, you can't identify when the encroachment started.
Well, darn it, I want the money.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't, I, that'd be really tricky to do legal wise, because.
Well, that was my question.
Who or when, and, yeah, I would say, no. I'd say going forward, you could set a policy of get off or pay, but not a retroactive one.
Okay.
And I think this comes back to what Brittany said. We need to do something about encroachments and maintenance. We need to address that, send letters out if we know those, you know, and then that way they've been notified. And I think then at that time, you can justify doing something different, cause you've done notified.
I think that should be for another work session, though.
That's fine.
So, maybe, I mean, look at these, say what we're gonna sell, what we're not gonna sell, and then another work session to figure out encroachment maintenance issues. For now, I'm fine with these eighteen properties setting aside money, and also are we doing no build and no build?
Well, that's, my only concern is, is this is an area that bikers use a lot, and I think it's a build in this area. It really does, then, to me, then it takes care, it fits the criteria that it takes away the open fill. If not, then it shouldn't be sellable.
Yep. I'm in agreement with that.
So, if they wanna buy, it's, it's a no build area. If they, if they don't wanna buy, then we just keep it so that open fills there.
No build as in no above ground structures? Like, could you do a pool, cause it's flat, or what are you? That would require a fence. That's true.
A, a pool would require a fence.
Yeah.
They, they wouldn't be able to do that.
So, no fences either? No open fences either? Okay.
No build, nothing.
I, I guess I still have a problem. If people buy the property, then we tell them they can't do anything on it. I, I don't know.
But Scott, that's up to them to buy. They don't have to buy. We're not making a forced buy here.
I know, but you're putting kind of an option here in our discussion. If you don't buy it or lease it or whatever we're talking about, then you have to remove the encroachment. And then we say, if you buy it, then you can't do anything on it. I think we have to be kinda careful with that.
Well, how would you limit it, Dr.?
Well, I, I would think they oughta be able to landscape it, but I think they should be able to put a pool on it or something if they wanted to.
So, let me add, so Scott, you're bringing up some good points here. Should it be a height restriction? They can't go above a certain?
I, I think it should be a height restriction, because I think you're talking about the open space fill. But it should be a height restriction, but I don't know if you can really say, oh, you can buy this property, but you can't do anything. It just seems odd. And, you know, and we still have, a lot of these properties are people that are in open space neighborhoods who've been paying maintenance agreements, and they could come back and say, gee, you've never maintained it, so we did. I mean, I think you just kinda have to look at all sides of the issue.
So, you would limit the height, for example, the height of the fence?
Yeah, I don't think you should build a building out in there particularly, but I think if you wanted a pool or something, and that's what we allowed in the quote, no build zone, south of French Country State.
Kelly, for, for a pool, is it four feet, five feet, six feet? What do they have to have?
It's, okay, it's kinda complicated, and I'll try to be quick. It's four feet if it's like a fence inside the property, just around the pool. But if it's along the property line, it's a six foot fence, and it has to have a self-closing locking gate.
So, two fences?
So, I would, I would suggest.
It's an either or.
Okay.
Can we move this to the agenda item and, and try and wrap it up when we hit the agenda item? And then, let's take a, a really brief break for anybody that needs one, and start our official meeting at seven oh five. Cause we, we have people here that are here for specific purposes at the beginning of the meeting, and we don't want to force them to stay here till way late. Okay. So thank you for coming, everyone. We will start the meeting off with an invocation by council member Bills, after which I will lead you in the pledge of allegiance. Actually, I'm gonna do the, Noah, can you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Okay, so you just come up to the mic here after the prayer, Noah. And then your dad will walk up here and make sure the mic's turned on, okay? And then we'll do that. Okay, Britten, thanks.
Our dear father in heaven, we're so grateful tonight to be able to meet here as friends and neighbors and residents of Highland to try to create the place that we want to raise our families in. We're grateful for the rain that we've received, and we're grateful for all of the blessings that we have and ask for. Thy spirit to be with us throughout this meeting, that we will be kind in our comments and respectful and make decisions that are the best for everyone in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Okay, Noah, there's a button on the mic that says push. If it's, if there's a light there that's shining, it's on, so just, yep. Ask us to stand.
Please stand. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, so the first part of our meeting is for any person to talk about any issue they want to. You get three minutes. There is only one public hearing on the agenda today, and that is for a text amendment on shipping containers. So if you want to talk about shipping containers, there's a public hearing for that. If you want to talk about anything else, feel free to come up and give us three minutes of whatever it is you want to say. And then state your name, please.
Oh, my name's Mel Cook. I live on Wildflower Lane, which is, that's one of the properties that's been discussed. And so we just want, we did not submit a petition to purchase the land until probably ten days ago, so I just wanted to make sure that that would be considered. It was, I think, a yellow dot instead of a red star.
Yes.
Anyway, and it's an unusual situation because we live on a corner lot, and so, but nevertheless, that's where, that's where we're at. My wife and I would like to purchase to be able to have access to those trails back there, so.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cook.
My name's Carrie Bushman. I live at 9992 North 5680 West in Highland. There's children in the room, so I'm not going to give part of my presentation.
Three minutes.
Yes. I just have a quick question. What is the process and procedure for ensuring that we don't have books in the library that shouldn't be there?
You talk to librarian, I believe we've had this happen before, who's right there.
Okay.
Then if that doesn't resolve itself, then I would talk to council.
Okay, I don't know if they're in that list yet, but from what I've researched with Alpine School District, there's a significant amount of pornographic books for children and teenagers that have been found on their digital library that is hidden from parents. They are explicit and extremely disturbing, and so I'm hoping to make sure we don't get it into our public library. So I will speak with her-
Yes.
-about that. Also, I did some research and I did analysis on our open space between Michaela Meadows and Windsor Meadows subdivision in 2003. Michaela Meadows, and I've had a discussion about this before, but Michaela Meadows paid for a .804 lot, $2.45 per square foot. The average between those lots was $2.47 per square foot. Windsor Meadows paid between $6.73 a square foot and $5.96 a square foot for a .271 lot. So I wanted to look at that discrepancy. I'm going to do some more analysis and expect that information from me shortly.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, we are on to our presentations. Is there someone here from youth council to present? Oh, you're coming, great. Would you introduce yourself and let us know what's happening in youth council world?
Hello, I am Camilla Bradshaw, the government chair. So a couple of weeks ago, the youth council helped with the Halloween trick-or-treat street, which was awesome. We had to move everything inside because of the weather, but it was still super fun. We had more people than we expected show up, and it was really fun to have companies and other city employees dress up and hand out candy as well. So for upcoming events, we are working on a service project for the road home. So for city involvement, there will be donation boxes in the Cedar Hills Walmart, Highland City Library, and Macy's. We're asking people to donate gently-used new gloves and socks for the road home, and this will go until mid-December. And for youth council, we are doing our own service project of refugee kits that we will assemble in our general meeting on December 8.
Thank you. Any questions from council? I thought the Halloween event was awesome. I think we had, we figured it out, about 500 kids come, excluding parents. We know because Kurt's candy ran out, and we knew how much Kurt candy Kurt bought.
We even had someone come from Fillmore.
Oh, wow.
Right? From Fillmore?
Yes.
Yeah, we did.
Just for trick-or-treats treat.
Very nice.
That's pretty impressive. So thank you. I'm going to exercise mayor's prerogative. I should have mentioned this during public comment time, but I'm gonna take that. For any of you that are here or watching online, on Thursday evening in this room, there will be a seminar held by Dr. Lynn Scoresby, who counsels youth and adults. And it's going to be on emotional self-reliance and resiliency. I've seen that presentation before a couple of times. It's really good. This will be interactive if you're here. This is great for parents and grandparents. Super good. We started the series before COVID, and the last one was going to be at Lone Peak High School. And COVID hit us, and we had to cancel that. So this is wrapping up that. We held it at all the other high schools in the area. This is wrapping it up. But it was easier to schedule this building than schedule the high school. So any of you that have kids or grandkids or nieces, nephews, you are welcome to come. Bring your friends, come early. It's really good, and I think the room could fill up real quickly. So seven to 8:30. There'll be a Q and A at the end, and Dr. Scoresby's got a lot of experience. He's retired now from BYU, but he's still doing some counseling. So anyway, that is the unpaid public announcement. Now back to our regularly scheduled programming and on to the arts council. And so I'm going to invite Kurt and myself to come down, and we're going to invite Shawna to come up. And after our presentation, then we'll invite the new chair to come up, all right?
And it's not fair that Shawna's leaving, but if you have not met Shawna Larson, you've not met a great person. Shawna spent, it was 11 years there at the Arts Council. You've helped organize a 501(c)(3) charity. She has been very dedicated, making sure that we have all of our art work there. If you've ever been to Highland Fling the Art Show, that is Shawna that's done that. We've had several plays here in the city. We have all the art classes. We have different senior art classes. We have choirs that we have going on. Shawna's been very busy over the last 11 years, and she is an awesome person. With some family situations coming up, it's made time now for her to step down and go away. Doesn't mean she's not going to still be there to help, but Shawna, as, we're gonna miss you. But I appreciate it. We wish her and her husband the best. You go and focus on what's important there with your family. And we have a gift basket that's been put together that we'd like to present to you. As well as some flowers. I think those are all deserved. And the cards, I believe they're from staff and council.
So let me start over again. But here's what it says on the certificate. Man is not put into the world as a finished product of a predetermined limitation of capacity and development. He is not branded or stamped like a jug with its limits as one gallon, five gallon, et cetera. There are no men thus predetermined as one talent man or two talent or five talent. If the man wishes thus to limit himself, it is he who does it, not nature. We know the potentials of no child that was ever born. Thank you, Shawna, for your decades, and I'm saying decades because you've served us before the council, the Arts Council, of service to the community. Your work on the Arts Council has helped many residents develop hidden talents and thus blessed their lives, their families, and those they have touched. You have served the community at large through thick and thin, and there have been thick and thin times. Your kind acts and words have touched individuals that are returning and will continue to do so. You're not stopping being who you are. You are a wonderful example of what it means to be a Highlander. Highlander is a better place because you and Woody chose to live here. So this is your certificate. And, thank you. My wife knows. It says, "Thank you for reaching up, reaching out, and reaching beyond, and you certainly are emboldening it up." And so we present this to you for your service. So we turn the time over to Shawna. Sorry.
Thank you. Thank you. Two best mayors ever, right? So it's been a great 11 years. It's been a great ride. But my husband's very sick now, and I need to be home, so that's probably the only reason I couldn't give it up. It's been such a pleasure, and I've met so many wonderful people, and we live in the best place ever. I just love it here. Never would want to be anywhere else. So I would like to introduce you to the new chairman of the Arts Council. Phoebe, would you come on up? This is Phoebe Hall, and she's, you know, I couldn't let go if I didn't know that I was going to turn it over to somebody who was going to keep it going and make our community better. And I know she will do that. I'm excited for her. And so, thank you, everyone. Do you have any questions for us? No? We're good?
I've met Phoebe. She's a bundle of energy, and I'm going to be real excited to see what happens on that score. So... Okay, so I am actually next. So I'm going to come down, and I'm going to ask Christina Woodbury, if she's here. She's not. We'll have to take her up at the next meeting then. So... Noah Reed with his parents, Jackie and James, to come up. And we're going to do something fun here. Hello, Virginia. I'm just gonna put you on right here. Hang on. So... Best place is right where you're at. So James, I got an email last Friday, and it was from a person in Massachusetts, this person right here, who said, "I have something for Noah, and I would like him to get it, and I don't know how to give it to him. Can you help him?" So I called your grandpa because I knew your grandpa. And this is it. So I'm going to ask you to open it. Maybe Mom can help, and then... Or where? Can you see, Virginia? Well, she's watching online.
It says your camera is off.
Ah, that's my problem. There we go. Okay. So there's waving to you. All right, so James, why don't you open the box? And then we'll have your parents hold it for you to see. You have no idea what this is. I think you're gonna enjoy it. So Mom and Dad, why don't you grab corners? And... Let's see. Oops, you're upside down. So Noah's a Tom Brady fan, and these are Tom Brady jerseys. And so she wanted you to have this quilt, and she made that for you, and she...
Thank you so much.
We're gonna, staff, can you get pictures of, take pictures as well? Anyway, I just thought that was the kindest act clear from across the country. She's never met you, but she saw you. She saw the video about you and Tom Brady, and her heart melted, and she just had to give this to you. So thank you, Ginny, Virginia. And that's just the thing. Did I, did I turn it off again?
Can she see now?
Can you see?
No.
Well, it'll be on video, okay? So you can watch it on YouTube Live channel. You can hear it, all right?
Thank you.
Your principal verified that.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. We appreciate what you did. Okay.
Thank you so much.
We better hang up. Now, I think that was remarkable. So thank her for doing that. So... Parents, I have something for you. You each get a pen because you've raised a wonderful lot. And I know they come the way they are. We can't really take that much credit for it, but... Let me reach out the certificate. James and Jackie Reed. Plants grow most in the darkest hours preceding dawn. So do humans. Nature always pays for a bright fight. Sometimes she pays in strength and moral muscle, sometimes in deep and spiritual insight, sometimes in a broadening, mellowing, and sweetening of the fibers of character, but she always pays. So I know you've had some dark times. Thank you for sharing your son's experience with us. And for enduring the dark nights of uncertainty filled with tears and heartache that come when your children suffer, your persistence and the care you've provided will make this outcome possible. Your family's stories has already blessed the lives of many. It will be a ray of sunshine for many more. We are so glad you are a part of the hand of God. And Noah, you get your own pin and certificate, okay? So here's your pin, and here's your certificate. It says, "Happiness is the greatest paradox in nature. It can grow in any soil, live under any conditions. It divides environment. It comes from within. It is the revelation of the depths of the inner life as light and heat proclaim the sun from which they radiate." So you have a lot of delight, and your happiness is not because of what you experience, it's because of who you are. Your positive, persistent smile and fortitude have earned you a place in the hearts of Highlanders and people throughout the country. Thank you for being such a great example to your family, friends, schoolmates, and those who you have recently got to know. Those who know you all agree, you are someone whose actions and words represent the best of human nature. We are proud to have you as a Highlander resident and someone we've all got to. Congratulations, and keep it up. I'm really proud of you and having your parents. I know how hard it is. Says, "We should give them work." But anyway, here's your box.
Thank you so much.
And thank you for being here and coming. Well, that was the fun part. You can see a picture of Noah there at a Buccaneers game, and Tom Brady actually came up and gave him a hat and talked to him. That's a picture of him going into surgery. That's a picture of him going into surgery. So you're a brave little boy. Thank you. All right. We had another award, but the recipient will have to come back next time in December. So we have our consent items. We have items A, B, C, D, E, F. Council, is there anybody? Oh, by the way, thank you for those that came. I believe the principal was, was here from his school as well as his family. Anyway, Council, any of the items on consent that you want to pull?
Mayor, I'd like to pull consent items three D and three E.
Okay. Is, any, are there any other items that anyone else wants to pull?
I would like to pull item three F.
Three F. Okay. So do we have a motion on A, B, and C?
I'll make a motion to approve consent items three A, three B, and three C.
I'll second that.
Motion by Kim, second by Kurt. We're ready to vote. Is everybody online? Okay, voting's done. That passes unanimously. Okay, Scott, three D.
I just had some questions and I understand that Spencer Moffett is here from Boyer Company as well as, I've talked to Andy about this. My big question is, is I just want to understand better how the two Costa Vida and Arby's is going to be accessed off Canal Boulevard. I, I know you can go down farther and go around the roundabout and come in, but I've been kind of confused about the ingress and egress right by Costa Vida.
So Spencer, do you want to come up and address that or?
Just maybe kind of clarify what happens.
Andy?
Yeah.
Is that something we can cover? Well, Spencer.
Oh, yeah, two, Andy Spencer and Spencer Moffett, yeah. Okay.
I guess Spencer Moffett with the Boyer Company. Great question. We went back and forth. We've discussed this at length. We're a little bit restricted in that North County is a UDOT road. Access to North County is restricted. Canal Boulevard, being that we're that close to the intersection where we have a full movement intersection. We elected after meeting with the staff and getting a traffic report from Nathan Hales, a supplement to our report, that a right in, right out would be appropriate at this location.
So that's the purpose of that triangle.
That's the purpose of that triangle, to restrict traffic. The concern is that a left turn coming out of that would be cutting across a potentially busy road. And especially that close to the intersection, that could be dangerous. So we moved the left end back to the, I believe, Andy, what's the name of that road with the roundabout? I'm going to put you on the spot. Oak Brook.
Oak, Oak.
Oak Brook. It's Oak Brook. So Oak Brook. Right. So that'll be the primary and through. And then the roundabout is to slow down the traffic coming into the Costa Vida and then the existing townhome community there to disseminate the traffic. So that was the intent.
So my, my question is, is this triangle that we have here that kind of regulates things, how much elevation is there in that? Because I, what I worry about is people going west on Canal Boulevard who decide to enter and go to Costa Vida over that, which you can't do.
Right.
Theoretically, but how, how do you prevent it?
Inevitably, there, there will be people who do that. You're right. I mean, if you build it, it'll be hit. I, I think it's, it's constructed and I'll have to look back at the plans. It's a rolled curb so that if they hit it, it's not going to rip the tires off their vehicle, but they'll know that they hit it. But it's only, I think, eight to 12 inches tall, rolled curb, six. So we're, I think we ended up at six. So you'll know you hit it, but it won't do damage to your vehicle. You probably won't pull in again over that area.
Yeah, they have something similar over in Lehigh by the Chick-fil-A. And I've actually driven over it a time or two. So that's why.
I know exactly what you're talking about.
That's, that's why I don't know how this works.
If you look at it, it's all broken up and busted up because I think everybody in the valley's hit that.
So we're going to have good signage and stuff? Because I'm, obviously people are going to come down North County Boulevard.
Yeah.
Or up North County Boulevard and they are going to want to go to Costa Vida. And so I, I guess, I just want to make sure we have good signage and things because we want it to be successful. But we also don't want to have a lot of traffic issues as well.
And one of the items is, it's, it's larger than the Chick-fil-A. We call them a pork chop. It's larger, so it's more visible. The Chick-fil-A one, you don't know it's there until you pull up on it and you see it for the first time. This is larger, it spans a greater area. So I, I think it's more visible, easier to see. And certainly there's demarcation. We have a sidewalk going through there. So it's, it's going to be more significant than the, the other.
So we have signage, maybe pointing to go down on the Oak Road.
There'll be internal signage. Well, it'll be, right in, right out will be signed, signed pretty clearly. You know, I don't know if there's an effective way to say keep on going to get to Costa Vida and Arby's. I mean, that may confuse people more on Canal Boulevard. But I, I think with retail, people figure it out. It may take a time or two, but they'll figure it out, the easiest and fastest way to get in and out.
So if this doesn't work, and this is Randy Spencer, what's our alternative?
So if it proves that too many people are missing or, you know, blatantly disregarding, you could have either. You could have somebody that innocently says, oops. You know, as we've talked about, the one by Chick-fil-A. Or you could have some that say, you know what? I figured out how to do it and I can do it, you know, and I can make a turn. If it proves to be a problem, the city's recourse would be to come and place a small island in Canal Boulevard, a raised island, that you would then have to drive over to then get to the entrance, which would essentially cut it off and, and make it infeasible. Because we would play, make it out of the, you know, the 10-inch curb that you see in, in a lot of the UDOT streets. Where that's a little tougher to drive over. So that would be our, our next step. If, if this gets placed and, and we, you know, we do have some observed problems, that would be where we'd go next.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I think today you told me that this, the state is working on signal lights for the two intersections on Canal Boulevard. Is that correct? Can you give us?
They are, yeah. So the state has.
I mean, turning signals.
Yeah, yeah. So in the north, in the north-south direction, on both ends of the new section of Canal Boulevard, both the, the North County Boulevard end and then the SR 74 end or Alpine Highway end, they are going to install what we call protected phasing or left turn phasing or left turn arrows, if you will, for you to be able to turn left if you're proceeding in both the north-south direction on both those roads. So you'll have a dedicated phase to turn left onto Canal or, you know, left, you know, at the Alpin Highway.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Spencer, just real fast, as you've talked, I believe we have Arby's and Costa Vida.
That's correct.
As they've talked about this traffic flow, have they expressed any concerns or did your traffic study show any concerns with the, the way this flows?
No, they did, they did not have any concerns with it. Their primary was concern was the ability to get their trucks in. And the, the island proved problematic. That's why we'll have a lower curb because it, the most likely candidate to hit those is their delivery trucks as they come in to make deliveries. But traffic flow, no, they didn't have any concerns. They're really structured. I don't think Arby's, I don't think Costa Vida is a breakfast provider, so there's really limited hours in the day. And they see peak traffic at two times. It's going to be noon and about five to six o'clock.
I mean, as I went down there and I, is it called Pathalon that's doing the, all the townhomes there, the developer?
Pentalin. Construction. Yeah.
With all that traffic, I mean, it's, those are pretty dense in that area. But as we come out of that area, as they've looked at the circle and getting everything out, is the traffic study showing that they need to exit out? Because I believe you have a, an exit out on North County.
We do.
There. Are they showing that's the main way they're going to go or are they going to be coming back to this?
They'll, they'll, most of the traffic will be coming in through Oak Brook and out through the right, right out. To get back to the North County Canal Boulevard.
No, it's, I know you're, you're, they're going to go down. There's another entrance for the townhomes further down.
So you're correct. They'll find out eventually the fastest way to get out and onto North County is to go through your, through that neighborhood and take a right turn.
I would, I would suspect that people who frequent that area will find that as a shorter route to get onto North County. So more access is better. I mean, it, it disseminates it in more, multiple places. I think it'll be a combination of all three, which will hopefully reduce the, the load on any one particular intersection. But you're, you're probably right. They'll find a back door there.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Any other discussion on that? Okay, Ian.
I just want to talk a little bit about this from the reference point of being a physician. You know, before COVID, there was a lot of talk about the opioid crisis. And certainly there has been a problem with that. And certainly there was an issue with over prescribing and, and being not careful with a lot of things. And there's been a lot of efforts in both the medical profession and, and state legislatures and different things to remedy that. In my patient population, I have a number of people who are on chronic pain medication. And, and many of them are justified. And not everyone that has chronic pain is a drug addict. And I, I have a hard time because a lot of times we get politicians mixed into this and then there's this easy solution to everything. And it's not easy. I have a daughter who has a condition called Sharcomy II syndrome. She's been in pain. She's 36 years old. She's been in chronic pain since the time she was five years old. I don't know how many surgeries my daughter has had to keep her functioning. She teaches 30 piano students. She has three children and she lives a pretty normal life, but she has to take pain medicines on a regular basis. So I'm going to put that attitude in there. So what happens with the crisis? There was one company and they made a long-acting form of a higher dose Percocet, which is oxycodone. And they probably misled the medical community about how addictive that medicine was. And, and, and so they've been appropriately sued and chastised and all that stuff. But this opioid litigation settlement where all the state attorneys are joining together and they're going to sue all the drug companies that have anything to do with pain medications or distribution of those, I think is really misguided. And, and I've seen this many times in medicine where there's a problem and so all, and I, and I'm sorry, Rob, if there's other lawyers in the audience, but the sharks come out and in the end they sue everybody and they get, you know, the ones that benefit most often is not the people that were injured, but the, the lawyers. And I'm sorry. And what happens and what I worry about this litigation is they're suing all the distribution and different things. So there are many people in this country that validly need pain medications. And when these litigations go through, everybody hats are on the back or we stop the problem. But what you've really done is they'll pass these costs on to the individual patients who need pain medicines in two or three ways. One, it'll either become extremely hard to get some of these items, which I've already seen. Two, they'll become very expensive. So these things like this increase the cost of medical care. And I have a little trouble now because most of the drug overdoses we see in this country now are not from prescription necessarily, unless people purposely take them to commit suicide. But it's coming through the Mexican cartels and all the illicit drugs, heroin and fentanyl and stuff that are flooding this country with our open borders. So I have a hard time suing these companies and being part of this. So I'm going to vote against this because I think the long-term side effects of this, if I can say that term as a physician, are bad. And, and I think we need to kind of stop and think what we're doing because I don't think Highland is going to get any of this money. The state may get some and use it for some treatment programs, which would be nice. But I just think the long-term costs are going to be horrendous to people that need medications. So I'm going to give you a couple more examples because we need to move along. But what a lot of people in here, and the citizens don't realize, is that most of our medications for like blood pressure and stuff are imported. And where do we import them? We bring them in from China and India. And we've had trouble with supply for some time now. And so we're constantly switching people's medications. And we've also had trouble with quality. There was one batch of blood pressure medicine that came in that was contaminated and with a deadly contaminant. So I, I have problems suing US companies when we need these medications. You know, I've been very involved in the COVID epidemic and I'm thankful, we all know Big Pharma probably makes too much money. But at the same time, they've been working hard to bring cures for COVID. And I, I'll tell, I'm not going to list the number of people in Highland that I've treated with monoclonal antibodies that wouldn't have come about if there hadn't been money to do the research. And the vaccines and the other treatments we have that are saving people's lives from this epidemic. So I think we need to be careful when we support litigation against the companies just because the state thinks they're going to make some extra money off of it. So I've said what I need to say, but I, I want to vote against this.
So Rob, can you just walk us through how we got this on the agenda? How this came to you?
That's a good question. Yes, so as Councilmember Smith indicated, various states bonded together with some of the more impacted subdivisions, counties and cities across the nation. Their attorneys generals and local attorneys sued one manufacturer, Janssen, whose parent company is Johnson &amp; Johnson, and a few distributors, McKesson, Cardinal Health, AmerisourceSpurgeon, regarding the, their manufacturing for Janssen and their distribution for the other three of opioids. Claiming they over prescribed or encouraged or offered incentives in terms of selling and a whole list of, of claims regarding how opioids were developed, marketed, sold and distributed across the nation. After several years of kind of preliminary litigation and ongoing discussion, two settlement agreements have been potentially reached with the distributors, one with the distributors, one with the manufacturer, that requires them to, in general, they'll pay out a significant amount of money and also agree to certain injunctive terms. For Janssen, for example, the manufacturer, it agrees they will not manufacture opioids, except for certain ones that are allowed on an ongoing basis. For the distributors, they have to engage in new boards for oversight that require additional training, monitoring, reporting systems that investigate, you know, unusual sales in particular areas or purchases of opioids. And they've agreed to do this, but in exchange, the companies essentially have said, we don't want to face this kind of litigation again. So go get everyone else, all of the other government entities who could sue us, to sign on to this. So they have a base rate they're going to pay out. And then there's incentive payments. Well, they'll pay out more for the more political subdivisions that join in to these settlements. Essentially, they want to eliminate as many claims as possible against them in the future. So Utah, Utah has signed on to the settlements. I don't believe Utah was one of the original states in the litigation, but Utah has joined in. And so we received a letter from the Attorney General's Office from Reyes regarding the settlement and encouraging Highland City as well as every other political subdivision in Utah to join in these settlements in order for Utah to gain the most benefit for those, the most incentives to get those injunctive, you know, actions. And so we have brought this to the city to see if this is something the city would like to participate in as well. It's not clear if Highland will get any money directly out of this. It may be that it goes to the state and the state funds treatments or better care across the state. They indicate that they don't have a plan yet for exactly how it'll be distributed in Utah. But at least there'll be, some amount of money will come back to Utah overall. So that's kind of the gist of what this all involves. So the, they request it from the Attorney General's Office is sign on to this, participate in the settlements and then authorize, you know, your staff, your mayor to then carry out whatever documents need to be done in order to execute this. There's a deadline of beginning of January of next year. So it's a pretty short window.
So let me ask you, so let's assume, let's go the other way. We don't sign it, does that mean Highland then can go sue for all the opioids or the drugs? I mean, I'm just saying, why are they asking Highland to participate? Why, why, why is it a matter of a city chimes in on this? And if we don't do it, what's, what, what are we, do we have any other alternatives?
Theoretically, Highland could have asserted these types of claims. You know, you've impacted our community. We, we participate in, for example, medical and EMS services through the district. And so a lot of our funding goes to help alleviate the impact of this opioid epidemics. We've incurred costs and in search of residents. We're going to bring all these suits against you for all these. Whether Highland would actually ever do that or frankly has the resources to carry on that kind of large-scale litigation is doubtful. So, but as they saw here, it was, this litigation was brought by several entities working together. Several states, several cities, several counties joined together, which spurred this. And so in exchange, these companies are saying, we recognize you all did this. And obviously they, they deny all liability, you know, they did anything wrong, but their settling matters. But we don't want to face this litigation again. So please go get all of the other. matters, but we don't want to face this litigation again, so please go get all of the other communities that didn't join in this to settle as well. So it would preclude Highland City from ever suing these companies for these activities. It would not preclude any individual resident or person from bringing any of their own claims if they wished to do so, or signing on to a class action, that'd be a separate process. This is just Highland City as a city entity.
So, the settlement has already been reached? This is just trying to say...
Yeah, there's a certain amount of buy-in that they need, but it, the documents are all drafted, you can read them on, put the website there, they're very lengthy. I skimmed through them and read through them. It's, they're very, it's very complex litigation.
So us signing on means we potentially get a share of revenue, and Utah gets more revenue out of this. Not signing on means, yes, we can sue, but we would not be eligible for any direct benefit if there is any.
Correct.
I oftentimes get though, because I'm a stockholder, not in these companies, but I get things about group litigation, if I sign this form and send it in, I've yet to see a penny. So I'm really dubious about this, and I think the long-term issues with this, I think it's going to make medications more expensive and hard to get, and we're going to have more and more trouble treating people with true pain. I just have a hard time with this.
I'll be honest, I'm personally voting for it. This isn't about the medication itself, it's about the distributors and what they did. They're being accused of lax control of allowing massive amounts of this drug to be used and going through illegal channels. And also, they were accused of basically downplaying the addiction risk in their marketing. We know that 80% of heroin users, they start out on prescription medication. And so, this isn't just an opiate addiction, it's a drug addiction that stems from that. You know, I think there's positives to drug medication, there's negatives to it, but we need to hold these distributors to a higher pedestal in how they market and how they distribute and how they control it to make sure it gets in their right hands, like your daughter, who do use it effectively. So that's why I'm voting for this.
Well, I, you know, I'm sorry, I just disagree, because I know what happens, okay? I just know what happens. And it's a feeding frenzy. I saw this with FinFinn 25 years ago, they never proved a lot of the things they claimed, but there was lawyers that built $29 million mansions in Alpine from the money they got from it. So the people that benefit from this is the litigation and the litigators. And the people that need these medications end up paying a lot more for them, because Big Pharma passes the costs on, or they become really hard to get, and we have to import them.
Any other discussion? Because I think we're going to need to vote on this one individually. If there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion on item 3E.
Did we do a motion on 3D?
No, we didn't, not yet.
Can I make the motion on 3D?
Sure.
I move that we approve consent item 3D concerning the Ridgefield commercial retail area as delineated.
Is there a second?
I'll second that. This is on Ridgefield, correct?
Yeah, yes, it's 3D.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion by Scott, second by Kurt.
Did that include the two, there are two stipulations in the staff report regarding...
Yes.
And I'll second the two stipulations, too.
Okay, we are ready for a vote.
I can't get mine to work, so I'm voting yes on 3D. Okay, here it goes.
So, are we ready for a motion on 3E?
I'll make a motion on 3E. I move that the city council adopt the resolution approving Highland City's participation in the proposed populated settlement agreements.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Motion by Kim, second by Kurt. Are we going to be able to do that one electronically, or do we need to do that one? Let's do, let's do voice. So we'll just do roll call, we'll start with Kurt. Tim? Tim?
Yes.
Scott?
No.
Brittany? Okay, that passes four to one. All right, item 3F, and Brittany, you pulled this one.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions to staff about this one. This is short-term rentals. Can you tell me what the rules will be for somebody who already has a short-term rental, and then what the licensing process would be?
A licensing process for short-term rentals, it does require a business license, so those that have current business licenses will be able to continue their Airbnb's the way that they were licensed to do so. If they did not receive a business license, technically, they would have been running it illegally and would be subject to these requirements, and would be required to get a business license under these restrictions.
So, and if they have application in process, they're also grandfathered?
That is also true. If they have submitted the application before, if this passes, then that is also applicable, that they'll be able to follow the rules as it was when they submitted it.
Any other questions, Brittany?
No.
Any other discussion? Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I would make a motion to approve consent item 3F, short-term rentals.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Kurt. We'll start with Tim. A yes or no on this one? Tim, yes? Kim?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Okay, I have a request to move item 7 up to where 4 is right now. We don't necessarily want to make one of our favorite service vendors stay for hours. Does anybody have a problem with moving item 7 up right now before the public hearing? Okay, I saw no objections, so, Mr. Philpott? Fred, come on up.
Great to be here again with you this evening. Yeah, staff asked me to come before you and present and discuss the open space analysis that we're going to conduct, and provide you with an opportunity to ask questions, and I could provide any details that you may want with regards to our scope. In summary, what we're really looking at, and what staff has tasked our firm with, and again, for the audience and for those who may not remember me, I'm Fred Philpott with Lewis Young Robertson in Burningham. We've helped the city on several projects relating to economic development and utility rate studies and impact fees. Here, what we're looking at is the open space fee that the city currently assesses and evaluating that, and looking at financial sustainability within the open space fund and relative to parks, maintenance, and trail maintenance. How we're going to do that is to collect data related to each of these components in this fund and the fee, look at the assets the city currently maintains and operates, and develop a neutral, data-driven study to look at sustainability with regards to operations, as well as capital expense, making sure that we're able to fund, or the city's able to fund, operation and unfunded capital needs. And develop a tool that this, the council has seen in other areas that we've worked on, so utility rates, for example, we've developed sustainability models. If you recall, we worked on the general fund as well and helped develop a tool for that. So we're looking at creating the same type of tool here that allows for a scenario analysis of options, and how do we develop sustainability as it relates to this specific component within the city's budget. So that's kind of a brief summary of our scope. Again, I'm here to address questions you may have.
Let me just, on your scope, when it says open space, we have a special service district here in Highland that 18 subdivisions are part of. Is this study only looking at those specific 18 subdivisions that are part of the Highland Special Service District, Open Space District?
We will be looking at that, but we will also go beyond that and look at the relationship within the general fund as it relates to open space and parks and recreation.
So all parks in Highland will also be part of this study?
Yes, we'll be looking at that, that distribution, because we want to be careful, and when you start putting things into buckets, funding buckets, that you evaluate subsidization, if that is occurring, and why or why not that, you know, should occur, and so, we'll be looking at both components.
Will you be doing any capital studies? Like if we look at a playground or pavilion, the life of a playground, or you'd be looking, saying, "We got a playground that's this age, that there might need to be capital in reserves to be able to go replace that?"
Yes, we are looking at unfunded capital needs. We'll rely on staff to help develop that list and look at what needs to be funded. That will be then programmed into our model.
If in the, will this be, are you going to be looking at everything that's being maintained or mowed? If it be native, if it not be mowed at all, or it's just, it's area that we're not maintaining, and an area that's grass that has irrigation? Are you breaking it down to that?
Yeah, you know, the objective right now is to try to pull in as much as we can. Obviously, we'll be limited by data, but right now, we're collecting that data. But my understanding and discussions with staff is we'll be looking at all of those nuances as it relates to the different types of facilities, whether that's established parks versus undeveloped land, recreation land, and we'll be looking at that and making sure we consider that in the data and the analysis.
Well, there'll be anything about our trails, if there's, are you looking anything with the asphalt trails?
We didn't specifically talk about trails, but...
That will be included in the, in the data that we provide to Fred, yes?
I think we're trying to cast a pretty wide net with regards to all of this, make sure that we account for everything that will be addressed under that parks umbrella. And then, how do we, again, allocate that to the different funding components within the city? So there'll be some relationship here, obviously, with the general fund, and what, how does the general fund need to address capital as well as operational? How does the open space fee need to address expenditures and capital needs? And how do those relate to each other and work together?
So you're going to give recommendations if we, a scenario where we eliminate the open space fee?
Yeah, from our perspective, we're not, we don't have any limitations on scenarios.
I would recommend that we look at that, because it's a point of contention and has been for many years.
Yes.
I'd like to see what other alternatives we would have if we eliminate that fee.
Yeah, so our, yeah, our tool will be a scenario analysis tool that allow for different elements to be developed, and provide you with the data to understand the ramifications of those decisions. Because in most cases, when we're working through a financial plan like this, when you pull one lever, it impacts others, right? And we have to do something somewhere else to mitigate the impacts of those types of decisions. And so, that's what our model will help evaluate, is what happens to other things if we make a decision.
So let me ask you this, so let's assume our, all of our parks, I just want to make sure how we're going to get the data. Let's assume that fund, you know, that maintain all parks in our budget is $600,000, and that we have $300,000 that's coming from open space, you know, to make, so it's 300 coming from general fund, 300, just using those as numbers. Your numbers are going to match back to our 600,000. You're not going to come in and say, "Hey, your budget needs to be 800,000." Are you matching our budget? Or are you, you know, does that make sense? Are you going to go right with what our numbers really are to maintain it? And then, if we want to mow, like, are you saying, "Hey, you're mowing every 10 days"? Do you understand what I'm asking?
So we're, you're kind of getting into components of a sustainability plan, which is, are we, I think, what you're saying is, are we efficient with our resources? And is there different ways maybe to operate that may change the baseline assumptions that we're dealing with? We're not experts with regards to parks operations. So we do rely on staff to help us understand what are the elements of your budget, and are there elements that are unfunded? In most cases, we typically don't have entities that are spending more than they need to on levels of service as it relates to parks and recreation, especially related to a luxury item like parks and recreation. It's all governed by level of service, and do we want more or less of that level of service? So as a council, you may have some input on that lever of saying, "Hey, we want less of a level of service," and that would then change that component. But we won't necessarily get into that level of detail of trying to determine if you're mowing five days a week, and you need to drop it down to four days a week, and how much are we going to save by doing that? We will rely on staff to help us understand that, if there's elements within the budget that can be manipulated, whether that's unfunded need or level of service issues that you've brought up that may reduce some of that cost. But we're really looking at taking that budget and that, and building a pro forma and isolating those elements that determine proportionality and relationship within the funds, and then project that in the future, so that if we make changes, how does that impact your future related to funding these elements?
Have you done this before? I'm just, I just want to make sure there's, I mean, because I know you've done a lot of other fund studies, but have you done open space fund studies, or HOA fund studies or things that way?
Yeah, I've done park impact fees, we've looked at park and recreation fees with regards to operations and maintenance, and all the other, you know, fees, transportation-related fees. But we've, I've done specifically parks and recreation fees as well as park impact fees, and spent a lot of time in this type of data, so...
So you'll, as a result of this, you'll, one of the things you may come up with is, "Hey, we are not saving for future capital requirements like playground replacement or whatever else, like trail rehabilitation, that kind of stuff." You would, you'll identify deficits in terms of saving that'll come out of your study as well?
Yes, yeah, we'll look at, that's a typical benchmark that's evaluated as reserves relative to future capital, and ensuring that you have sufficient revenue to stay positive into that planning horizon.
Like tennis court replacement, or pickleball?
Yeah, we'll need to look at that and make sure there's sustainability there.
But like what Scott's saying, we should be able to look and say, "If we want to get rid of the open space fee, we're going to need to charge a $5 fee out there to everyone in the city, and that will take care of what it took to maintain that, what those 18 open space subdivisions are doing." Is that...
The type of thing, you're, he, I think, coming out of this, correct, you'll just be able to say, "This is the deficit." Not, do you charge a fee, or do you increase the property tax? I think that's, that's one way you have to decide. You're not going to recommend a fee or a tax, right?
No, I don't know what it costs to maintain the open space.
Yes, yes.
Yes, I'll be able to evaluate the impacts, but, yeah, my job isn't to legislate, you know, I'll provide you with the data, and as we center on options, you know, whenever you're dealing with scenario analysis, there's unlimited possibilities, right, that we could potentially evaluate. My job is to help you maybe center on some that are key elements and scenarios that I can then go back and evaluate and provide you with data to allow you to make a decision. And some of that may be, you know, if we eliminate a fee, what's the property tax impact? I'll have the data to do that, but I won't be recommending...
Well, can I click, I guess what I'm saying, let's assume I can go to 18 subdivisions or areas that have, and I click this off, and I can see what the cost was to maintain that. You're saying we should be able to do that, where we can say, "This area, it costs 300 or 550,000 to maintain that area, so if you do something, you got to find some funding, or that's what the funding was taking care of that area."
Yes, yeah, yep. And again, we'll be limited by the data that we're able to collect, so I don't want to overpromise, but based on my discussions with staff to date, we're working on collecting that data, and we should be able to provide a scenario tool that allows you to do that type of, or have that type of discussion.
That help you, is that what you were looking for, Scott?
Well, yes, I think we need, I mean, we can spend lots of money studying stuff, but, you know, I'd kind of like to see what our options are.
Okay.
I have a question. We had a resident come up during public hearing, and she discussed doing her own analysis of basically essential, essentially comparing people who bought open space lots versus non-open space. How it was is if you bought an open space neighborhood, the developer needed to donate 20% of their development to the city. And her analysis was showing that, basically, that... was showing that basically that 20% was then put into the cost of the lot. Is that something that needs to be included in the analysis or no? I don't know if that makes sense to you.
Well, he wouldn't have the dat- that data of what everyone paid, nor would we have the data of what people paid at the same time. So let's, for instance, let's assume that a, a full acre lot, I'm not going to use Eagle Mountain, so from there, Eagle Mountain for a full acre lot's 325. So it comes to be 750 and, and, you know, a square foot. Well, an 8,500 square foot lot out there sells for 180. Well, that now comes to be almost $15. Well, is that equating? How does that equate back and forth? I'm just saying, I'm not sure if you can do that. We're going to have to do it individually.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, what you're talking about is difference of value over time. And in any of these studies, we do have to draw a line in the sand where we start saying, okay, as we look forward, what, what do we do about unfunded needs and operational expense? But I, I feel I'm pretty good with analytics and Excel. And as we get data, I, I have flexibility to consider that. I mean, the objective now is to collect as much data as we can get and start looking at what is that data telling us? So if there are other pieces of information that, that we can aggregate and, and build into this, then, then I can consider that. And obviously, I have to be on my side concerned about scope creep and, and time. And I'll work with staff regarding that element. But I don't want to be limited by saying, hey, data is an important, I, I can look at that information if it's available.
Is there any other types of information or, or decisions that you're looking at making that haven't been discussed that where you might have to collect?
So if we wanted to go out for bid, let's assume we want to take areas and bid it out for, I've heard that Lehigh has certain parks that they have, subcontractors do. We would be able to maybe say, this area, we guesstimate it costs us to do it. This, this is, should we look at this, the city center park there? We figure it costs us $20,000 to maintain that or do that a year. We'll be able to say, that's what we thought. And then we could say, hey, let's have a person bid to maintain that one park. Would that give us enough info to kind of have a good guess what it would be?
Yeah, I don't think our objective was to evaluate the operations and maintenance by park. Specific, you know, to say every park, this is what it costs to ma- maintain and operate so that you can then, you know, e- even going out to bid would definitely be a separate scope and element. But that wasn't my understanding with regards to this.
But you're, you're categorizing the area. We know, like this is, this piece of grass or this area is this park, right?
Right.
So that, that will be a column.
And some of the work that staff is, is currently doing is buttoning down the acreage. So we, we can make some, some estimates, some general assumptions. Obviously, parks and, and various properties will differ in their needs. But based on the acreage, we could make some, some general assumptions as to the cost.
By park?
Based, based on.
And we would know, like this park has a pavilion or this park has playground.
Yeah, so I guess, yeah, the data could show information on, on average by park and, and per acre or per amenity type. I guess I would just caution, as you look to that next step of determining cost benefit relative to self-provision versus contract provision. We'll just have to remember that we're averaging data and, and, and trying to a- apply that, that data specific to, you know, specific parks, which will vary from year to year and park to park.
And to be clear, we're, we're not asking Fred to go out and solicit bids. That's something that staff is prepared to do if, if the council would like to.
Yeah. So just to summarize then, my, my understanding then from this discussion is really being able to have a tool that allows you to consider options relative to funding, even including the elimination of components, you know, to say, if, if we're not going to choose to utilize one tool, then how does that impact other elements of, of funding? With a focus on ensuring that we're looking at unfunding, unfunded capital and, and operational needs as we move forward. So, and, and that's my, you know, as I look at this, those are my key objectives. So I think we're, we're on the same page relative to that, that objective.
Anything else?
Yeah, there's one big question. When do you think the study will be done?
Well, our, our objective was to try to have something end of year. Obviously, staff is working on data collection, so we'll have to work together on that. But that was our, our objective. It seems like everybody wants their studies done at the end of the year. That's, that's what I'm getting from.
So this could be a presentation to council the first part of the year then?
Yes, yeah, yep. Where we could at least be looking at scenarios. And I would anticipate, I'm, I'm not going to come to you with a, a final product that you're not able to provide input. The idea is to have a scenario tool that you can provide input to me and I can go back and, and reevaluate data and, and provide additional information to you. So there'll be a collaboration here on, on this type of model.
All right. I think that's it. Thank you, Fred.
Thank you.
All right, item four. This is a, a public hearing ordinance text amendment to containers. We'll start with Kelly, talking about the proposed ordinance change. And bear in mind, council, this came from Planning Commission, who's been looking at it for, I think they first started talking about it in February of last year. And then, once the presentation is done, we'll open it up for public comment and then come back to council. Okay?
Thank you, Mayor. Council members, keep in mind, this is a legislative item, which means this is the council's opportunity to put on your legislative hats and create law. We don't have anything existing in our development code regarding shipping containers. And so this is y'all's opportunity to look at it, see if it's a concern to y'all or to the residents or to the Planning Commission, and just evaluate that and do with it what you will. That's basically what this is. Okay, just a bit of background. The reason why this came up is because with code enforcement, basically during COVID, staff was receiving, this was calls being received by both me and Erin, calls, questions and concerns about shipping containers about once a week. But since Brett has come, which he's been here for maybe a little over two months, yeah, he's only received a couple of calls on it. Right now, like I said, we don't have anything in code that regulates shipping containers. So when we do have code compliance cases that residents submit, it's more looked at from a code compliance perspective with, like accumulation. And so if you're having, how do you explain that? If, if it looks like junk, basically, if it's dirty, you think of like cars that are unused that have been sitting on a property for five years, whatever, that's kind of what it's looked at as. So again, currently, the act of keeping a shipping container on the property is not regulated. Like the mayor said, we did bring this to the Planning Commission back in February of this year. We just asked them basically the same thing. Would you like to look into regulating it or just leave it be? And then they actually took a while and sent me emails of their written concerns of shipping containers. And then we brought, we basically organized their concerns, brought that back to discussion to them in September. And they discussed kind of how to, how they would implement those concerns into the development code. And then we as staff were directed to come up with a text amendment based on that discussion. That's what we did. And we brought that to the Planning Commission in October. And the Planning Commission made a couple of final adjustments in their opinions and then recommended approval of that text amendment to the council. And they voted 5-0 on that. These are just a couple of pictures of shipping containers on the property for those that don't know what shipping containers are. I'm like, you can use your little laser pointer. This is, I mean, this is like along Alpine Highway. You have the one just on the driveway. And then there are a couple in the backyard over here. This is, uh, looks like a sideyard right there up against the fence. Here's another one. This is from one of the complaints that Erin rece- received and went out and took some photos. Very large shipping containers right there. There's that one that abuts the trail. And then these are a couple more that Brett has seen while he's just been out. And he's also received a few complaints just regarding trailers and one good old semi truck in someone's backyard.
Do we have pictures, I'm just going to be the devil's advocate here. Do we have pictures of the shipping containers the city has? I, I, we got to be honest, the city has a couple of shipping containers out there too.
We do have some shipping containers. I did not take pictures of them. We have one on our, over at our cemetery where.
Now, one at the cemetery and two over the community center?
That is correct.
So are they exempt from this?
You know, the, well, technically, this is another thing. This is just, just like the short-term rentals in that if it's been on the property before, it's technically grandfathered in because these people put them on before this was an ordinance. So we would be looking at if this was implemented or if the council chose to regulate, it would be everything from then on is what we would be regulating.
Yeah.
Which the lady I spoke to on the phone yesterday, is that you?
Yes.
Okay, so I found that out today. So yes.
So are you done with, I just had a couple of questions.
Oh, sorry. Kelly and I have talked about the city-owned ones, right? Because if, and, you know, assuming community center still does become a location for parks building, we're going to add another one because we need somewhere to put event stuff when they get moved. Kelly and I have talked through this ordinance in terms of the city ones. So we do have another location identified for those. And we do, we would still meet code. So this would still apply to us. We don't want to say that, oh, you have to do it, but we don't.
That, that was what I was bringing up. One question that came up, as I look here on number 2A, is that shipping containers may only be permitted in an R140, an R130, and an R120. The question, I don't know if the Planning Commission discussed, in some open space substances like Mercer Hollow, they have larger lots. They might be .7 of an acre. And so they should be able to have that, would they, and I don't know, would they fit, because they, they're classified open space, would they fit underneath the R140, R130, or R120? Or, because that's not what they were zoned as. They were zoned as an open space, correct?
So those, if you look at our zoning map, they're actually zoned as R140, but then it's an open space overlay. So they do follow, yes, we're building permits and all that. They're regulated as R140.
So really, it's probably more appropriate to say minimum 20,000 square foot lots because in the R140 overlay, open space overlay, you have lots down to .2.
I'm sorry, minimum for?
Minimum lot size. Instead of using the R140, R130, R120.
And like, is it 5% or 7%?
Help me if the, if the Planning Commission discusses. So let's assume it was just 20,000. Some of us, we have setbacks. Is it, I think it's 10 feet on 115 on, you know, and, and the setback. So some of the, if you have a smaller lot, you're going to have a harder time meeting that setback. Would that be true? Or is it better to look at a lot size?
So here, really quickly, just because I think it would explain it best. Part of something that the Planning Commission looked at and with all of, well, majority of their concerns were addressed by just implementing the regulations that we already have for accessory structures. And so when you look at, these are just, just a quick overview of the regulations for accessory structures. But basically, the setbacks, you have a 30-foot front setback and then 10 feet on the rear, 10 feet on the side, and then 20 on a side that abuts the street. And then six feet from the main dwelling, which is measured from roof overhang. You have a 20 foot, 25 foot height max, which the Planning Commission went ahead and said, just no vertical stacking and just called it that. The size, which we've been discussing, for accessory structures, basically, the total square footage of the cumulative accessory structures on the property cannot exceed 5% of the total lot area. And then if it's a lot over two acres, then it's 7%. For R120, oh, and R130, it's 7% of the girl slot square footage that accessory structures can cover. And so the Planning Commission's idea was that basically the shipping container's square footage would be, would count towards this percentage. And so if they already had existing accessory structures, like a garage and a pool house, that would limit the number of shipping containers that they could have on the property. And that, we would just have to figure that out by counting them or counting the square footage by looking at past building permits. So this is that, this is the text amendment. And so that's where, in A, it calls out that they're only permitted in those residential zones. B is saying it, they need to meet those accessory structure regulations. And then the only way to regulate them really is just how we do with accessory structures, where they require a building permit. If it's larger than 200 square feet, or if they try to incorporate any electrical or plumbing, that sort of thing, it would require a building permit. Otherwise, it would just be a code enforcement just based on complaint. Oh yeah, the no stacking vertically, something that the Planning Commission discussed a lot was the color for accessory structures. If your lot is less than half an acre, the material of the accessory structure has to be consistent with that of the home. And they adjusted it just to say that you have to paint, rather than expecting someone to try to mount brick onto their shipping container. But just that you have to paint a color consistent with that of the home. But that, they decided to make that applicable to all lot sizes, no matter what. You have to paint. And again, this is, just to clarify, this is only applicable to shipping containers that are considered permanent, which they define as being on a property longer than 60 days. If it's less than 60 days, we don't worry about it. It's temporary, they're going to move it. Oh, and the, their last discussion at that last meeting was clarifying that shipping containers are prohibited on lots without a home. They didn't want to have vacant lots that just had a ton of shipping containers. And we also discussed if there was a barn on the lot because technically that's a permitted use, like the keeping of animals. And they also said, even with that, like they just want to limit it to, if only if there's a home on the property, that's when shipping containers can be allowed on the property.
So we don't have homes on our property?
I know. That's what I just pointed out to Erin about 20, like two minutes ago. Yeah.
I'm sorry, I misspoke. I just, I hadn't heard that got added. Just a staff miscommunication. So.
You're, you're saying homes because of an S. Is that right, Mayor? Is that what you're?
We're in violation.
Well, just because the community center is technically not a home.
So Kelly, we, this isn't code yet until it's approved.
You, you can, you can.
We can choose to not pass this at all. We can modify it. We can do whatever.
Mr. Mayor, how can we be in violation if we're, the property that we have all our containers on is not zoned for residential?
It, it's in the R140 zone. Our, our properties are in the R140 zone.
You know what, you could, most of the city properties are sitting on, they're probably sitting on over two acres. You could say, you know, if it's, you know, one and a half acres or larger or something, that.
Yeah, you could do that or just.
Just eliminate the home or exempt the city.
Exempt, yeah, municipal uses.
Say that again?
Exempt the city.
So can I ask a quick question here?
Sure.
From Kelly. Did you say that the pre-existing ones are exempted or grandfathered in?
Yes.
And have you identified all the ones that are existing in the city? How do you, how do you know which is there before the ordinance and which weren't?
So if there, if there is a complaint on a, let's say this is adopted and goes into effect in a month from now, so we get a complaint, it's actually on the owner of the shipping container to show that it existed on the property prior to.
Like provide proof or evidence.
Prior to this being adopted. So we don't have to go and inventory everyone? It'd be impossible to do.
Well, no, I, I understand that. I just wondered how people prove, because they could say, well, we put it there.
Photo, a bill of sale.
Yeah, I was going to say, a bill of sale would probably be a good, good indication. They had to buy it somewhere.
Something like that.
So how do you explain it to people that complain? I mean, we have this new ordinance and then people complain about one that's been there. You just say, hey, they had it there before the ordinance. You can't complain about it. Is that what you're saying?
We give them your number, Scott.
Grandfather.
No, actually, you're the new mayor, not me.
Never mind.
Well, also, do our best to educate. I know the Planning Commission also requested at the end that we. that we put it on, if this passes, we put it on the monthly newsletter and just explain it a little bit on the website as well, just in case, just, because obviously, a lot of people, even though we send out public hearing notices, don't know that this is on, unless their father contacts them or sends them the Everbridge text that they got. But we would just do our best to educate, is all I can really say to that.
Well, I know staff in the planning commission spent a lot of time on this. They go over details, they went over scenarios, and they did a great job of amending this text. So I'm in favor of it with also allowing the city to be exempt from this, if that's okay, Rob?
Well, exempt from the one requirement that says the home.
The houses, yeah.
Everything else we could adhere to.
Yes.
We do. Are you done with your presentation?
Uh, yeah, I'm done.
Okay, so then I'm gonna open it up for public comment if anybody wants to share their thoughts on this issue. You are welcome to come up to the stand. Erin, do we have anybody online? Seeing that there is no one anxious to grab to the stand, well, we do have...
My name's Brent Wallace, and I'm a private citizen in Highland. And I just happen to have noticed a lot of these containers lately. And I'd say that 80% of them have been there a long time. They're on larger lots by probably residents that have been in Highland for a long time. So it won't apply to the majority of these containers that, that these, somebody took those pictures of. And the other ones are on, like, on concrete, and I think they're used for recreational vehicles or snowmobiles or something like that, and they're on, with, with nice homes next to them. So those are the ones, it'll be a small percentage, I think, that are actually affected by this. But there's people that think, I moved into a residential area and I didn't expect to be living next to a container. And so it blends in more with the coloring of the homes in the neighborhood and that sort of thing, then I think it'll be beneficial. But anyway, that's my comment as a private citizen.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. Anyone else? Okay, public hearing closed. Council, any discussion?
Did you wanna go?
Oh, I was just gonna say, I listened to the planning commission meetings, and I was happy with the discussion they had there and what they came up with. Although Commissioner Howden said that shipping containers, the color that he used as an example was marmalade, and I wasn't really sure what color that is.
Is that, I'd never heard that as a color.
But I'm fine with what the planning commission decided.
I think it's kinda orange or brown.
Wouldn't you?
Yeah.
I don't know.
I'd like to make a comment. I, I understand why the city needs some of these shipping containers and different things. But I always have a problem philosophically when government leaders, elected officials make a rule for everyone else, but the city doesn't have to obey it. I really don't think the city should be exempt, if there, we have other alternatives.
And I'm sorry that I misspoke. I did not know that G existed on this, and that's my fault. That's a good question, Scott, and kind of more philosophical one. So the, the, the property that we intend to move the shipping containers to is the one that's along, is it 5600 West? Where we've got a pump house there. It's, it's about an acre property. We can't put a home on the property. That's not the intention of the property. It's, it's a location for the pump house, but we have some extra space and could fit these on there. Can you exempt the city? You absolutely can. Should you is a more of a political question for the council.
And if we exempt it from the home requirement, we're not exempted from any of the other ones, the setbacks, or the color, or whatever else, right? It's just, the city, it doesn't have homes.
We don't have homes, so that's not really an option for us. So, so by, you know, if you choose not to exempt us from that, then ultimately what you're saying is the city can't have shipping containers. We have to go to more of a permanent, you know, an accessory, accessory building, excuse me, type structure. You know, we have shipping containers for the same reason that other people do. They're cheaper in some ways than building an accessory structure, and in some ways, you know, it's more temporary, right? We weren't sure if this was going to be a long-term use or not, and that's why we've had them, just like many other people.
So let me ask you, when they put down here about shipping containers prohibited without a home, are we seeing a lot of problem where they're on an empty lot without a home? I mean, is that, is that what we're starting to notice, that, hey, we have 50% that way? Is it, are we talking, we're, we're trying to enforce something that's such a small issue that, that it's really, you know, you ever saw him ask?
So I'd say most of the ones that I saw were actually on, on peoples, on properties with homes. They were just larger lots typically, that had more space to put something like this.
So you could eliminate G, and it wouldn't necessarily cause a problem?
There's another reason to do that. Will you pull up the R-140 district and show permitted uses real quick?
It's one reason to do what? To have it with a home on?
And this is probably unintended, and I talked about it, but it's a, it's a valid...
Well, Scott, one way we could get away, if your shipping containers are prohibited on anything without a home, unless it's one and a half acres or larger than anything where the city has it, it would, it'd meet, but it'd also allow anyone that has a one and a half acre lot, they, they could have it.
The one we're looking at putting it on is only an acre.
What is it we're looking to put on?
So, if you look, you look, this is the R-140 district, which is 90% of the city. If you look at, these are the permitted uses, and I'll just go down to the most one that we used before. The most common one is keeping of, of animals subject to the following requirements. So, in this particular case, without that requirement, you could use a shipping container to store your hay, your tackle, all that kind of stuff. So, as you have a horse on the property.
And that's a concern, why?
It could be, from an aesthetic point of view, it's up to the council.
But it was a concern of the planning commission, so that's what they discussed at the end, said they didn't wanna see something like that, and that's why they added that.
We have, if you, if you're familiar, Strasburg Church, in the chapel here on 10400, right in the middle, there's a barn. Originally, that barn was there just to serve the horses there, under that provision. Because there's accessory to keeping the animals, so.
What, do you mind if I, just, while this is up, just pointing out, like, storage buildings, accessory structures themselves? Oh, wait, actually, I'm gonna stop right there because it's, basically, shipping containers would only, if we made them subject to accessory structured regulations, they would only be able to be on a property without a home if it was being, being used for animals. I'll just stop right there.
That would again, that would again, not make us ineligible if we didn't either remove the home or put an exception for the city on G. Rob?
So, yeah, if we just removed G, the city would still be prohibited because we're not keeping animals as they use.
Right.
So it would be, the way to exempt the city would be to say, shipping containers prohibited on lots without a home, except for municipal uses.
Yeah, we, we have all kinds of, not all kinds, but there's exemptions in the code for municipal uses all over the place. So height, building height, things like that, so.
So it would be consistent to do that if we did it?
Yeah, it's, I mean, the other side of it is, you know, if the council wanted to move down the road of having storage buildings built, stick-built storage buildings, and we'd obviously have to find the funding for it.
Any other discussion? We're ready for a motion?
I move that the city council approve the proposed text amendment to add section 3-625, shipping containers to chapter three, article six, supplementary regulations in the development code. And do we need, is G already part of it? And we need to add on that, as on G, shipping containers are prohibited on lots without a home, except municipal uses.
I'll second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Kim. Any further discussion? Erin, are we able to vote on this? No? Yes, we are? Okay, just a minute. All right, we are ready to vote. That passes four to one. Okay, on to item five.
I'd like to just explain my vote for a minute. The reason I voted no is I think we need to lead by example. I just think it's not right to exempt the city.
Sorry. Item five, resolution adoption of the designation of disposable properties. So we have, based on our discussion in the work session, we've addressed, I believe, the items on Beacon Hills to some degree. What remains to be a little bit unclear is the boundaries between the residents when, when those sales are made. Who determines those boundaries? And my recommendation to council would be that we let the owner sort that out. I know it's a potential source of contention, but it would be really difficult for the city to be in the middle of that. And, and I think, in most cases...
So let me ask you, can I ask you a question of Brittany? Brittany, your neighborhood had a similar triangle. Was that very contentious for those neighbors? Or did they seem to be able to work that out amenable amongst themselves?
They worked it out.
So where you have an issue in this case, everything else seems pretty black and white, is where the yellow dot is.
Yeah.
And I believe that's Mr. Cook's home. Is that correct? And one, one easy line of thinking is to just extend the property lines. Except, in this case, currently, the resident has access to the public property. And if you close that off and they viewed that as a benefit, that creates a challenge, right? Because part of the benefit that they viewed as living there was they had immediate access to public property. So to me, it's a fair request to say, okay, I wanna continue to have that, and we need to make boundaries that accommodate that. That seems like a reasonable request. And I...
Yeah.
And if we just say, okay, neighbors, you work it out, then...
I'm in agreement with that.
We just need to understand that there's a desire to be able to get access to those trails from, from the residents there, so.
So, you know, if you just take the, the engineering mindset, say, let's do it really easy, you just continue the lines. But when you consider other factors like, okay, well, one of the benefits of that property was that it had access, and now you're gonna close it off. So there, there may be other issues like that that come up. And I think if, in areas, this could be part of a, your policy amendment when you do this, is to say, in areas where multiple properties have boundaries that connect, that the, the neighbors need to work out what those boundaries are, when, and present it to the city before it can be sold. If you do that, then everybody has equal power, right? Then you, then two or three homeowners can't gang up on another one. You just, you force them to work it out. And maybe there's some contention there, I don't know.
I'm just, I'm working, I'm working with the yellow dots at, so they want access. Their one way is to buy all the way back to the back, but that, you know...
You just create a tunnel or a little corridor.
I'm just, we can see how they can work it out.
I would let them work it out, but that's, it's a reasonable request to me. And I think it's reasonable. It's not reasonable to say, city, you work it out, because, anyway, it's not gonna happen.
So are we talking about then surplusing this property with certain stipulations, or is this still a discussion item?
So we've decided, to my understanding in the work session, we decided that you were gonna surplus that within 10 feet of the scrub oak, and that council or that staff would work out the perimeter boundaries between now and our next meeting, so there wouldn't be, you wouldn't be able to finally approve it until the boundaries were established. Residents would need to agree to whatever internal boundaries.
And then we had a discussion right at the end about, like, a certain pool, a pool went in, what would they do with landscaping or fencing?
Right, so what was explicitly allowed, one option was to say, you can do whatever you want, just as long as it's not above ground. So that would mean landscaping. It might even, you may be able to do retaining walls. We'd have a requirement in there to make sure that they have a means of dealing with their water offflow so that it's retained on their property. That's something that people that have encroached wouldn't have taken care of, so they would have to do some modifications to accommodate that.
So who determines the property line, sir? I mean, we're saying 10 feet within the scrub oak and different things, but that's near regular border.
Right.
So I assume someone would make some straight lines here.
Some, well, somebody, the staff would do that. Now, there, there will likely be exceptions, because if you look at the southernmost property, where they've already encroached, they've gone into the scrub oak. So then you would need to decide, do you want...
There's gonna have to be some mitigation arbitration or something there.
Some, I, I don't, I don't think it's totally black and white. And I would just ask staff to, to make reasonable accommodations and, for existing conditions with that as a goal.
But we can't pass this tonight because we don't know where the boundary lines or anything that way. What you're saying, we need to go back to the neighbors with their understanding of what they've...
So we do the perimeter boundary and they do the internal boundaries. And then you, from what I understood, relative to encroachment, you all agree that those that encroach need to purchase at the current price. And that an alternative would be a lease, I think.
We haven't worked that out, we'll need to look at...
And we would have to determine what a lease price is, and maybe that's part of, what staff could come back with a recommendation on as well. Or you could say, look, we want the lease equivalent to what the purchase price is amortized over two years, three years, four years, right? And you, you could make that tonight if you wanted, or let staff make a recommendation and then you...
Lease it 10%, I mean, just keep it simple. You know what I mean? If they, if they don't buy, they can lease the ground at 10% of whatever the purchase value is. If it's, you know, $2.74, it's 27.4 cents per square foot.
Okay, so then they...
I mean, I'm just trying to keep it simple.
Or 20, or 15.
I can support what Councilman Ossler's saying, though. I think that's reasonable.
I've been supportive of that also. Was that 10% per month, or the 20%?
No, that's, that'll be annualized. So, so if they can buy the ground for $2.74, if they want into a lease with the city, you could have as an annual payment, it'd be $2.74 for the square foot that they would have, you know, that they, that would be their area. They can lease it. If they don't get ownership, it's not an ownership to buy, it's a lease agreement. Rob, what's your concern? Any concern with that?
So Kurt, when does, I mean, we're gonna reset the fee on a yearly basis, the amount.
Yeah, I think that would probably be good.
When does that reset?
On January, well, we could just have every year, January 1, that that's when...
Okay, so they have six, seven weeks here to determine all of this, because the fee may reset.
If we need to, the other thing is, Rob, is it better to say that we'll enter into a lease agreement, that they can get out of it anytime if they want, you know, it's, a purchase, but they have to purchase at that value of what the year they purchased it in? Does that make, does that make sense?
Yes, if we were gonna put into a lease agreement, it'd be, you can terminate the agreement either by leaving the property or by buying it, subject to council approval, and it would be at the current year's rate. The question I said was that a, so over one year, they pay 10% of the price?
Of the, what the purchase price would have been.
Okay, so each year is, so over 10 years, they would have basically paid enough for it.
But they don't have ownership. A lease, it's, it's just a lease for the, the access. Do we want it?
Yeah, it's rent. I'm just clarifying what's it.
It's rent.
Yeah, it's not 10% per month, it's 10% per year.
So you have, you have a renewable lease then, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
And what frequency do you want to renew it so that the price adjusts?
Do you want to just do it annually? That way, every year, they have to make a decision that, they can have a lease agreement that automatically rolls over and they pay, by paying their fee. If not, that means it either ends, or they can come in and purchase.
Yeah, I think it would be an automatic renewal. We build the contract language for it.
Yeah.
We have, we have the provision that the council adopted the policy of reviewing each year the potential price for open space purchases. And we have finagled the language of the lease such that that updates when the council makes that adjustment, the price, but that should be doable.
And when would that next adjustment be? It's, it's after January 1st.
Well, Scott, if, if we are saying we're okay today, I think we should say, they can do it all. Anyone that's part of the application now, we can say they can do it as of this year's lease rate. Is that what you're concerned about?
Well, I'm just wondering, if, if half of them would agree and half of them don't, we're kind of in the middle of it, and then we reset the thing, then that's a problem.
I'm okay, since we're talking about, if you guys are, to say that's this year's fee.
Okay, okay.
We did.
I just wanted to clarify that.
And I think it's a good clarification.
But let us look up what we did in September for people. We gave them a certain amount of time.
To buy it?
To buy it. And let's, let's do that same. But when we bring it back in December, we'll do that same thing.
Are we allowed to charge any, like, kind of a price for all of these applications that Kelly is spending thousands of hours on?
Yes.
I think we should have an application fee.
That's going forward, right? Doesn't apply to today.
It'd be just, going into 2022, there'd be an application fee to apply, to have it submit for an open space, like the purchase-
Right, but we'll have to determine what that is. And don't you have to do that by renovation?
We have to have an easability.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So that could be on a future agenda. It could be December or January. And just have staff come up with a fee that's representative of at least a portion of the cost of the time it costs to even look at and evaluate it.
And then that might help those who really look at the criteria and say, they really feel, you know, it's, they're going to be able to be approved. And they can call us a little bit before, I mean, just like other people, if they really are going, hey, how, what you get, you know, you're filming on this, they can call the council and get, before they submit the fee, just like they could on anything else.
Okay, so are we settled then on, well, we're not, we're not settled on, in this specific area, whether you want to do any kind of limitations on structures?
Are we going to come back and discuss that?
Good, we can do it right now, or we could, you know, that's part of the continuation of the item. If you're not ready to make a decision on that, we can just have that be lined up for-
Yeah, I think we have, need to have more discussion on that, because, you know, again, if people pay to buy the property, I think they need to be able to do something within reason with that property.
It's still within reason.
So we need to come, yeah, we need to come to a decision.
They're paying a lot less than the property's worth.
Right.
Right.
But Scott brings up a very valuable point. If they feel they own it, they don't want to have, we need to be sensible on what can go on that, that end. It would be landscaping, like you said, curbing or some landscaping. I bet the big question will be if someone adds a pool, you know, do we want, what would be the setback, Kelly? Would, a pool can't go right to the property lines, would they have to be 25 feet off of the property line?
It's a 10-foot setback.
Okay. That would be the only concern, is a 10-foot setback.
So I, I think that's a discussion item that will take a little while to work through.
Okay.
I don't think we need to do it tonight.
Okay, all right, so let's look at other properties.
Yes.
So the-
We've had some residents sit here during this whole time. I'm wondering if we can look at their properties. Mr. Skidmore's-
Mr. Cook? You're there. Let's go to the Skidmore's.
Yeah.
You were abandoned by your wife and child.
With good rea-
No. So staff reviewed this with the Skidmore's and they're okay with the, with the requiring the property and the Skidmore's are okay, just, that was reported to me by Andy. And, and Mr. Skidmore left me a voicemail yesterday saying he was on board with what it was as well.
So this is, that they can purchase up to 10 feet?
Within 10 feet of the center line of the-
The storm drain line.
Storm drain. And by doing this, I would assume that most, all of those residents along there would be able to do the same, similar, they'd be able to come within, I'm just, you know, to kind of give that signal for most of those residents. If we're going to do it for Skidmore, we're saying that everyone's okay to come within 10 feet of that.
I would just-
Could I add just a little bit on that for the neighbors? So Mr. Skidmore, in its own volition, undertook to survey it so that we could look at specifically where the storm rain was in relation to his property line, in relation to the depths that we would have to dig to, to access it. And so I, I think, I just want to caution in just saying, across the board, you know, the rest of the neighbors could go to, within 10 feet. I think if you choose to move forward, Mr. Skidmore, what I would say is that, you know, similarly, the rest of the residents could do a similar investigation. We'd look at it, evaluate it for, for their condition.
So they need to apply separately, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I think they need to apply separately. We need to look at what their conditions are, you know, and how it would impact-
Each one of them have to stand on their own, is what you're saying?
Yeah, they need to stand on their own.
Okay.
So that needs to be coming next year then, as part of the-
So I support this for Mr. Skidmore.
Me too.
I do too.
I think that's unanimous. You can go home if you want, or you can stay and enjoy.
Sorry, just to clarify, you're just approving Mr. Skidmore's request?
Only Mr. Skidmore, the one with the dot.
But we'll look at the others individually when they apply.
Helena, you're welcome to come up. Do you have a, do you have a comment or question? You're, come up, you have to come up to do it. Sorry, we don't have a roving mic. Actually, Andy, you could just share your mic with her.
Thank you.
There you go.
Oh, goody. I'll scoot up.
She, she can scoot.
I've just got a couple of questions. They keep popping into my head. I've been on a boundary type lot at one time, and we thought it was only on two sides. And then we found out there was an Indian trail. And our neighbor up on the upper street wanted to bring his wood in through, through our yard. Well, he says, I have a right to do that. And when it came down to it, it was through our garage that the people had built right over the trail. So there are a lot of if's. And the other side was a irrigation thing from the upper street. And the back one was a utility. And we found ourselves, just as we were getting ready to sell the place, with a mess of having to do all the measuring and, and a lawsuit and hiring attorneys to keep from getting sued, because he wanted to use that Indian trail, which was supposed to be there forever. So that's one thing. Secondly, while you're taking care of cans, what's, why can't you get rid of some of the junky cars on the road? That, that really bothers me. There are, are some that have been sitting here ever since I've lived here. And I've been here 27 years. And, and you talk about buildings that are, that you don't want to see. What about the, the trailers that sit on somebody's back lot, right in front of their neighbor's view windows? I mean, there are a lot of ifs, ands, and buts. And does the city really want to go into the bank business? Do you really want to connect, get in there and have to collect money? This, this sounds like a, a real thing of worms, I'll tell you. Just my, my thoughts. I've had 19 homes in my 70 years roughly of marriage and, and being alone. And there are lots of problems.
There are. Okay, thank you, Helena. You're welcome. Will, Erin, can you just have Brent call Helena? By the way, that was Helena Proctor's for the record. All right. So council, you're agreed on selling this one? Is there, let me ask, council, are there, like, this one, I don't see that that has any contingencies on anything. So in this case, your decision, so we'll have two classes. We'll have a class of property that we, or three, class property that we say yes to tonight, a class of properties that we potentially say no to, and then another class that we're saying, we need some more work from staff before we can finalize our decisions. Is that correct?
Yes.
And this is in the yes category?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Is this Highland Hills Platte C?
Platte.
Platte.
Okay.
Just back to this one real quick, just because it kind of applied to the one that y'all wanted to continue. Would you also like to continue this one?
So we're looking-
This is, this is an ahogs hollow pressurized irrigation system.
So based on what you have there, the answer from staff's point of view would be no to the one on the corner. And yes, just for that yellow triangle there.
So the red outline, the staff would recommend we need to keep for a line. The yellow is okay to sell.
Depending on, again, this is all incorporated with that same PI system that we're having an issue with, with twin bridges. And so it's just-
Right, so-
We say no to the line, but that, that's the concern.
So the way that the council mitigated the PI issue, I believe, was to set aside money to upgrade the pumps.
You're right.
Right. So that, unless that's not a mitigation-
You know, I forgot that. I have it all written here in about a paragraph on my page.
So we approved to sell the yellow area, that, I mean, when I put that little triangle, that will not affect any utilities or anything, right?
Correct.
I have no concerns on the little yellow area.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Okay.
That would, Kelly, can you put that on the yes list and then we'll do a vote at the end?
Yeah, I, I support that, but I, doesn't it give you a really, I mean, the triangle changes the shape of the lot, but it doesn't go all the way up to the corner of their property. Is that, are they going to like that? I don't know.
Well, that, that was actually in their request. They knew that there was a line there. And they actually sent pictures of that triangle, and it was kind of like-
Okay, fine, I don't have your concerns in. Okay, next.
Going back to this first one with the trail.
So you said something about the Bonneville Trail. Is it only those four or five homes that have that area? Do we still have an easement going to the west?
So we still have private, or public property from here up and over. But then all of this south, we've sold.
Yeah. The only, one, one thing I think is that council would need to be, where we're bordering Blue Bison right here. So this is an area that would be the border of Blue Bison, right?
Yes, correct.
Is there any, Rob, is there any benefit in the city bordering Blue Bison, just in case something in the future? We're just having a lot of concerns up in the Beacon Hills area with Blue Bison, maybe trying to get access somewhere. Is there any way where they can, you know, come and try to buy something from some property owner to get some roads through that without coming to the city? Is it better for the city to own that little strip so we can always say no, or not to let you come across the city property? I'm just trying to be sensitive up in this Blue Bison area.
So I think the inclination of keeping the strip as a potential buffer is the most safe route. However, any connection to the city's street system would have to be approved by the city. And the city has both it, or has it in its, we adopted that ordinance a few, a little while back regarding connections outside. And the city would have the right to say no to that. But if you wanted that extra security, the council could decide that that was an important policy, we have to keep that as a buffer.
But if we surplus this and the homeowners buy that little strip, I don't think Blue Bison's going to go through their backyard.
No, they were just, the only, I think the only thing, only risk there would be, and it's not a risk, is that Blue Bison or somebody else buys, like, the home to the left of that yellow property and then demands that a road go through there. And like I said, we have complete control over that. So they, that isn't even an option if they did that.
Yeah, it would, it would be, there's some strange scenarios that could play out, you know, somehow they got Draper's, someone did for, you know, connections through, but it wouldn't really, I don't see it very likely as a scenario playing out that way.
Is, is in the future, let's assume Blue Bison does develop and there's that master trail that's the bottom, you know, is that something that they might have to incorporate in theirs and they might be looking for a trail along this area there? You know, what I'm asking is, this, the area that they, it's, it's part of the mag plan to have a trail? That's what I was trying to understand.
Only if it's part of Draper's plans.
On Draper's plans?
Only if it's part of Draper's plans, yes, and they require it.
So the, I'll just point out to council that on the left corner, the upper left corner, you can see another lot where there has been significant encroachment, not in terms of volume per se, but there's some hardscape that's there that you may, if, if you don't, if you don't sell it to him and, and you end up selling it to the guy on the left, because he's already there, that's, that is, that could be an issue.
So why does everyone else think, do you think it's okay to sell this area?
I'm fine with it.
I think it's a good idea.
I'm fine selling it.
Okay, done.
So are you approving just that request or that whole strip going all the way?
Just that request. And I would imagine that council anticipates that the rest will request it.
Rest will request.
Okay. So what about Mr. Skidmore's home? Can we go, just look at that slide one more time? So for, for most of the other neighborhoods, we've required that everybody on this street purchase. For this one, that's not a requirement?
Fair, fair point. Andy, do you have an opinion?
As I went up and looked at it, a little bit of difference maybe with this one to some of the others is, I don't think in any scenario we're contemplating, you know, cutting off the trail, et cetera. So I think some of the others looked at it and said, well, if, if one person buys it, then that'll cut off access to all the rest of the ground. So with us only letting Mr. Skidmore buy a portion of it, you know, he's not even buying up to the trail. To me, that would be a little different. Also, for the intervening time, he's been doing a maintenance agreement. He kind of maintains and mows this backyard, even all the way up to the, up to the trail.
Because that would be my concern, is the city mowing all that area? And if we just also take it-
It's, a lot of that area is just native, I mean, it's mowed with the native mower.
I know, but I guess if also you come and there's a jog out of a property owner, so you're coming down the mower, you just can't, you-
Well, it's, it's not right now, is what I'm saying. He, he, where'd he go? Oh, I guess he left.
Left.
He could go.
So he cares for it all the way to the trail right now?
Yeah, right now, he mows, like, his is kind of manicured all the way to the trail. And the rest, a lot of the others, I can't say everyone, but a lot of the others are just native grasses, you know, that are kind of mowed with the brush cutter.
So how do we get the brush cutter done there?
So they've already saw the trail, they're already-
But they have access.
They just kind of, they just kind of swerve onto the trail.
They're already dealing with him mowing, so they're skipping that already, right?
Yeah, they're already dealing with him mowing it. I mean, that's what I'm saying, is this one has the trail for access. And so I didn't view that, at least in my look at it, as, as a, as a problem. Because of the trail, you have access to the whole corridor. That, to me, was the difference.
And this property, just asking you a question that I think I know the answer to, is there's no requirement for any city water lines or PI or sprinklers to be adjusted?
When I talked to him, his sprinkler system waters all of the green manicured grass behind his, his area. And when I talked, my understanding is we didn't have other sprinkler lines going through the area that he would be purchasing, that six or eight feet, or, you know, it's like-
So he's out watering it, we're not having to adjust any city sprinklers to accommodate?
Yeah, that's, that's my understanding. That's part of, was part of my consideration, is that there, you know, really, things were staying unchanged. And in large measure, I guess at that point, I, you know, I don't know exactly what the HOA requirements are for fences, et cetera, but, you know, I guess he could put a fence, but, but in, in large measure, probably, if he purchases it, it really stays unchanged, because he's already maintaining it, you know, doing it kind of- it really stays unchanged because he's already maintaining it, you know, doing a kind of maintenance agreement or whatever. So, if that makes sense, if you go up there, look at it today, it looks like it's his yard all the way to the trail because he's maintaining it all the way to the trail. Even though it wouldn't be, you know, officially. I don't know if that's confusing.
And he has a maintenance agreement, is what you're saying?
I believe so. I...
We need to probably be able to document his maintenance agreements better.
That's my, I, you know, my understanding conversation is he did, but I didn't hold the agreements or anything.
Okay. Anything else on that, Kurt? Or Brittany? Did that address your question? I think it plays out later, so let's move on. So we already decided no on the top star.
No on the lone, yes.
And the question is...
I feel, I feel this other one, the second star, still adds the open space fill because that's almost like a parkway detail where people are on the side going, so I, I would say no, just like we said no to the other.
So Kim's a yes. Anybody else have an opinion they want to share?
So Kim's a yes to the...
A yes to the no.
A yes to the no.
Okay.
No.
Now it's a no. Instead of an indirect. Is that okay? Anybody have a problem with that?
I, I think it's fine.
Okay, so we're, we're settled on no. Now we're on these four.
Did you say no on both?
Yes, we said no before.
Yes, we said no on both. Okay.
Two no's, we're not making a yes.
The answer is no on both. Okay.
Yes.
You had a picture showing the, that view. And so the, the comment was, the area they're looking to purchase is a sloped area, right?
And a sprinkler line, which they'd have to, like a sprinkler main that would have to be relocated, which they did with Jupiter Circle. So not the end of the world, but the slope is substantial.
So how close to the trail did they want to buy?
Well, I'm sure it's as much as they can, which is a five feet...
Well, they have to be a minimum of five plus feet, right?
Yes, yes.
And so this is kind of continuation of what we surplus in the past during Jupiter Circle in a way, right?
Yes.
Yeah, and Scott, I think we went up to eight feet of the trail on that one.
Right, yeah, they're eight feet away. That's where the fence, the...
And they had a slope also, at least.
Oh, yeah, they had a major slope.
And so they're saying that those others down, is it Jupiter Circle, they had a slope coming off. We were concerned about, I think at the time, because that was supposed to be, you know, how it was going to flow down to the irrigation area. But what you're saying is this other area, being consistent with what we did there before, they could buy up to eight feet of the trail.
Right, eight feet of the trail and they were willing to move the sprinkler line.
Now have these people indicated they're willing to move the sprinkler line or do they even know that they need to move the sprinkler?
That would be the stipulation that they move.
That would be the stipulation.
Now, just, just look at the corner though. I mean, you've got some landscaping in that corner. Are we saying they can go in eight feet up along that whole corner all the way down? Is that what we're thinking?
Well, you got eight feet from both trails, don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah, eight feet both trails. But then lining it up with their property.
Yeah.
So would you continue north of, that last top star, would you continue north of their property?
Or maybe just extend, yeah.
Have they requested that?
I, you know what, that one didn't come with a picture. It was all three of these together in one email.
And then the fourth was independent?
This is the one that is linked in y'all's...
They, they, all four will need to close south at the same time.
Those three came after we closed the, or they, they came together before.
On time in one email.
But I think, going what Brittany was saying, I think we want to make sure all four of these because we don't want to have, even though we might have access, it would be hard for us to maintain with sprinklers and that if we just have one. I think we want to make sure all four close.
So this would be all or nothing. They have to move the sprinkler. And I would think with a slope like that, they'd have to build a retaining wall to retain their water on their property.
That'd be good to know the exact parameters on the retaining wall, right? And the fence height.
Yes. And they can't drive a truck down the park.
Down the trail. Okay.
You heard that. They can't bring their landscape trucks down this, the, the trail.
Would we, sorry, this is curiosity question, how, down south we have the split rail that we installed. Is that something that we'd continue up?
I don't think, they don't have the split rail at this current time behind them, right?
Well, like down Jupiter Circle, those sales.
Yeah, by the eight foot.
That's on the very south end of that, right?
Like along here, there's the split rail that was put in with those property sales.
Do you remember how expensive that was to put in, anyone?
The city did it?
I think there was existing split rail that was, was there existing or we just installed a new one?
I thought it was installed, right? I was not here.
We did, you know how expensive it was? I mean, what, what might happen is we might have to pay more for the fence than what we're getting for the ground. We just gotta be careful.
So you could make that a stipulation that if, that the, any improvements that we have to do are covered by the residents or you require them to put in the split rail fence?
But I suspect that these people would probably put in a retaining wall and some sort of fence. So do you need a split rail fence too? I don't know.
I think we're okay without it here. This is open park.
It's open. I would say a lot of them already have retaining walls in their areas.
So you just make sure they understand they have a requirement to retain their water. And I guess you could berm it, Andy, is that...
Yeah, this one would be a little trickier because it's fairly constrained, I think, for them to, they could berm it, but it's pretty steep slope. I think the others we were talking about were a little flatter, but...
But they have to retain walls in.
Yeah. They, they, to make use of that area as a backyard, it seems like they're probably going to want to build some retaining walls. If that's why they want to acquire it, to get a backyard. I don't know why they want to acquire it, but presumption is they want more backyard.
So they'd have to put a retaining wall to create that.
These houses, this would be very open, a lot of them have, almost they walk out their back door where their little barbecue thing and then their property ends. And so, I mean, they, they're fairly small, so I get why they want to maybe try to get a little more space.
As long as they, so here's my understanding today. They all have to buy. They all have to retain their water.
Correct.
They all have to cover the cost of moving the city water line.
And they're eight foot from the trail.
And, and there's an eight foot perimeter close to the trail. Now, the question I have for you, where those trails connect where the T is, is that flat?
I think it is. I think it comes, you walk in, kind of flat.
Flatter.
Flatter.
Flatter, Highland Hills.
Now, I want to ask the council, does this get into an area where you're now removing the open field? Because you're taking park area that actually could be used in a bigger, because now you're taking part of a bigger park, right?
That was why I was wondering on the very end, how much we allow them to go.
Yeah. Depends on how much they want, because there's a big park down below on the other side of the trail. That's a lot of open.
Do you want to put any stipulation there that says, you know, they can't, their continuation can't be more than the neighbors to the south? Like, if to get within eight feet of the trail on that south property goes eight? You see what I'm saying? Because if, if you kind of had a contiguous, a line that's smooth, that was parallel, if you go with eight foot, close to the trail, that changes there on that, the north two properties that can jut out. This is another one where you could say, ask them to work out the boundary with staff and then come back and approve the contingent.
So you would prefer a boundary with all four properties that has a curve to it rather than following the outline of the trails, is what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm, I'm saying that because it's flatter to the north and now you're taking away...
And they may not want all the way down to that trail either on the north.
I, I think this is one where I would say let staff work out the proposed boundary with residents and then have that be a follow-on.
I, I think what maybe you're saying is like how, how this comes as a T. I don't know if we want fences all just kind of a T because you could draw, you're saying you rounded a little bit. They keep a little bit of an open fill right there.
Same as the, on the one we just said no to, because that, that, that would be my opinion.
Is everyone else okay with kind of trying to keep the roundness there? I think it keeps a good feel there.
So that one would be continued for, for staff to work with them to come up with that outer boundary?
Boundary.
And then they have to pay for, because the cities could have to move their sprinkler lines here because this is on city sprinkler.
So depending on where the boundary is, the city will have to adjust its sprinkling and move lines accordingly.
Do we require the residents to pay for that?
Yes.
Okay.
I think that's what we said.
So, so we are okay with selling improved park property now?
Question.
I mean, I guess I have a couple of questions just as we're moving through these. And I know, like, it's a long process and everybody wants an answer. But when I'm looking back at the Timber Ridge property, staff noted that that is on the MAG Vision Trail to connect the Bonneville Shoreline. And then I look back at those other ones that we talked about up on Timberline and we put aside money for the pump, but we didn't talk about what's been, one of the important things we've talked about, which is that we don't even have the water, even if we, if we have a pump. And now we're talking about selling improved spark park space. So I guess I'm just kind of getting nervous about some of that.
I think that was one of the reasons the line stopped where it did because further north it opened up into a park, right? So we stopped selling right there where the jog happened.
That wasn't approved.
Because that wasn't approved and it was part of a trail corridor that was in the general park. These now are part of the general park area.
But it's less area for the city to maintain.
I'm just saying it's not so easy, which is why it's a problem.
Wait, Brittany, so go back to the trail corridor one. Was that the one, one before?
It's the one on Timber Ridge. Sorry, Kelly.
But I, I didn't have a sense, looking on that map, that it actually involved that specific property. It didn't, it looked like it would involve the property to the west potentially.
But it doesn't involve that property, is that correct? Is that our understanding?
I'm just reading the staff notes.
I need to understand that one more time. Do you mind explaining that again?
So do you know specifically whether on that specific property where the proposed trail impacted that?
That's why I brought up about the Bonneville thing with MAG. I was saying that that was a trail corridor that was supposed to be preserved for a Bonneville Trail.
Was the connection. And obviously, this is in their vision plan and so general location could change. But that was our point, was this is our only public, publicly owned corridor that we have and could regulate.
That was included in the strip then. It wasn't above that strip. I thought it was just...
No, it's a strip.
I don't know that it is that strip specifically.
Right. Well, and if Blue Bison's going to develop that and, and everything, where are they going to put the trail? I don't know.
I don't think they'll care about that.
No, they're not going to care about that trail.
But the, the, the point, I think that's the, the real point is, okay, if you're going to preserve that trail corridor, then you're going to have to also tell the guy on the top left there that they have to unencroach. Are you willing to do that?
Any encroach on this?
Because he's got concrete.
I think we should let him buy it.
So that, so Brittany, once again, and Kelly, you're going to have to help. What you're saying is in the plan, it shows this is supposed to be a Bonneville Trail area, but it's just a general area. It's not a specific area.
It's just, basically, like I just said, this is in their vision plan and so the goal is to have this connection. And so whether we choose or not to make that connection happen, or if Draper helps out with that, then we would... It's in ours. Oh, it is in our trail plan. It is in our Trailmaster plan. That was the other point right here.
It is in the Trailmaster plan?
Yes, it is.
See, and you can see...
We have access.
Because where it jogs north is about where the property that we just decided to sell was.
But do we have the access where the other dots going all the way back to the west?
This is new.
There's probably a reason just to hiccup on this until we kind of get, you know, in the general, in our general plan to help us. There, I mean, so Brittany, it's probably a good catch. We probably ought to hesitate till we can go back to the general plan and look at all the trails, if this is part of our trail plan.
Yeah, I'd hesitate on this one. I didn't realize it was part of this specific property. I thought it was the other properties.
Okay.
So that one's changed now, Kelly?
That's deferred till general plan update. So no for now.
Yeah. I mean, kind of our idea when we did this initially was, let's start out slow and see what happens.
Correct.
Right? So I just want to make sure we're still doing that.
Good, good advice.
Are we, is there another one that you wanted to discuss or are we...
I'll just come back to it later.
We're, we're back on the four. The, the four we were looking at?
Oh, okay.
Those, because we're not, it doesn't sound like we're settled on that yet. So no decision tonight.
No swat, I'm sorry?
There is no decision tonight on that other than to have, the current decision is for have Kelly work on a boundary with, with those properties. Is that still okay? Because I thought Brittany's question was valid, like, are we selling park now? Developed park.
I, I think we need to see where the boundaries are. They may not want that much property.
Yeah, that's true.
Let's see where the boundaries are.
Yeah, so it stands, not confirmed, but I, maybe when they understand all the conditions, maybe it won't be worth the cost.
That's, yeah.
What was staff's recommendation on this mountain view one?
So what they were asking for is, you see the property with the star. There is a long corridor that follows the trail and he wanted to buy that.
Oh, and it's wetland boundary, but...
Yeah, and I think we ought to keep wetlands.
Yeah.
So I, that to me is, would be an easy no because he's asking for something. And if he can buy it, then why can't those neighbors continue their property?
And that, is this the wetland? No.
And this is partially wetland.
Okay.
Well, you were just saying...
So that's a no for me.
Yes, no. I say yes, no.
It's a yes, that it's a no. Now, I, I did talk with Nathan about this and one of his objectives in using the land was to run cattle or horse on it or animals of some kind. It's possible, and this would, as a council, you could say, well, if you put up like a wire animal fence, you could use some of that and then we would lease it to you.
Can you have, can you have animals on wetlands?
And the city wouldn't have to fertilize your mo.
Thinking outside the box, Scott.
Yeah, I grew up with animals.
Get goats.
We ought to get goats along all the trails and just eat all the weeds.
Did you know we have a donkey? I thought we had our own goat.
We have no, we have a donkey. The city has a, a donkey.
Oh, the city has a donkey? You're not naming them after their donkey?
I'm just saying staff that way. You know, people might use other terminology for the city council.
Yeah, this is being careful here.
Okay, okay, so that is a no. Okay, next. This is Windsor Meadows. And I thought we were going to do kind of get a...
I remember with the whole neighborhood.
I think, I think that's wise.
Subdivision in and just look at...
That specific one is a no this time.
Yeah, but I think we need to look at the whole subdivision on all these corners because all the corners are going to be very similar to this one request.
Right, and you've got one corner that's all landscaped. So either have a maintenance agreement between those three houses or they're encroaching. I don't know.
But I think...
Got water also on this one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so that one's a no. Next.
That's one that needs to come back.
Right, definitely come back.
The subdivision needs to come back.
It's no for now though. Let's just keep it simple. Okay.
I think we have all of them, but I'm just going through. We're just going through real quick.
Because I was doing a medical, we, we lost two off the top because they went through.
Yes, no.
And then we've, we've pushed through all of them at this point.
They probably ought to show us the ones they think are yeses before we...
Okay, should, should I go through them real quick, just?
Yes, so let's... Yes, so let's...
Do we have anyone that's still sitting here?
Well, there, there were, Kelly, so let's put them into one of four categories, no. Absolutely yes, no contingencies passed tonight, and then there's yes, but, yes with contingencies, right? And then different areas had different contingencies.
Fair, okay.
And so will they all come back for a final decision on a lot of these?
Right, so, well, on the ones that we say yes to specifically tonight, I think we're okay, we would be okay.
So the ones that with some contingencies, like...
Contingencies, then they need to come back.
Work with staff on boundaries.
Okay, sounds good. So review them with us.
So this one, waiting till general plan update.
Correct.
Okay. This is continued, and we're looking at, okay, here's my paragraph. Ten feet from the scrub oak, um, the no...
As a guideline.
As a guideline, yes. Um, the neighbors are going to be working out these property lines, they all need to address their own drainage on their properties. I, you gave us guidance to provide kind of reasonable accommodations for that ten foot when they have encroached into the scrub oak. And then the monies from these sales would go to a capital count for upgrading that PI system. And I think that's it, but it's continued for us to work...
Needs to have some type of access, they, as they're working out their boundaries, there needs to be some type of access.
Access, right.
Right.
Well, the builder, no build, that was the, you were wanting a height max, you would discuss that. This is being continued to be discussed later, and so we would bring you more, staff would bring you those potential boundaries, and y'all would discuss it then.
Yes.
Yes? Okay. I feel like I'm being tested in school. Okay. This one, the triangle, was a yes.
Yes, triangle's yes, the corner was a no, right.
Yes. Um, storm drain line, Mr. Skidmore's yes, the rest have to come back separately, and we would address the storm drain line accordingly.
Yes.
This one was a no.
Yes.
Right.
This one is my whole list, all or nothing, eight feet, oh wait, sorry, this would start eight feet from the trail. We're going to do more of a curb boundary, I'm going to be working with those property owners to really see what they were wanting, and we would come back to the council for, to address that outer boundary, they would have to agree to relocate that sprinkler main, um, and they would also have to retain that drainage on there, they're probably going to need retaining walls, so I need to make sure to tell them, our retaining wall, uh, development code sections. This is a no.
Yes.
It's, it's a no.
Stephanie, I hope you're getting all of this.
That's a no.
And then Windsor, we're bringing this all back to the council to discuss the subdivision as a whole.
It's a no for now.
Mm-hmm. So basically, we have two actual, like, hard yeses, we have two hard no's, which was three requests. Um, and then we have Twin Burgess continued, Highland Hills plot C continued, um, and then the general plan update for the trail continued, and Windsor continued.
Yes.
Yes.
I am sorry, everyone that is here.
Make a good job, though.
So, do we need to make a motion on that, Rob?
There is a recommended motion and a resolution to approve that. Um, you would, the recommended resolution has just property as like, what you designate as the approval, we would just...
So there's only two that would, that would apply to...
Those two.
And then the rest are continued, or denied.
So all you have to do is, all you have to do to approve it is just approve the two, and the rest will just bring back to you.
Okay. Does somebody want to make that motion?
Need to identify.
So you have Athena, the one on Athena?
So which two specifically were approved? The Skidmore property and the... And whichever property owner that is on the south. Where's that spreadsheet that has the, lists all the properties?
That, is that 12458 North Angel Gate?
12458.
Go ahead, Kurt.
So I...
That's Kyle Pole.
I moved that we approved the cell of 12458 North Angel Gate, the corner that is outlined in yellow, and Beacon Hills, plot J, and the cell of 11885 North Athena Drive, and the Highland Hills, plot A, up to ten feet, up to where the twenty-four irrigation line is at, storm drain line is at.
Do you have that, Stephanie? Because I'll second it if you're...
Were you okay?
If it's clear.
Okay, so you have 12458 North Angel Gate, part of Beacon Hills, plot J, that we will sell the yell, the area that's outlined in yellow, which is a triangle. We also authorize selling of address number 11885 North Athena Drive, the back area up to ten feet, to the twenty-four storm drain line, in the Highland Hills, plot A.
And just to clarify, that is in, you're approving that pursuant to the resolution with those two identified properties?
Pursuant to the resolution, and at the 2021 approved price.
And if I can offer one more clarification, when you say on Mr. Skidmore's, uh, we're only allowing him to purchase up to within ten feet of the storm drain.
Up to within ten feet of the, of the twenty-four inch storm drain line.
I'll second that. Motion by Kurt, second by Scott. And absent further discussion, we are ready for a vote. Okay, that passes unanimously, we're on item six now. Preliminary plat Ridgeview Pod B, um, who's taking that one? Kelly? You drew the short straw. For two of these, is that right?
Okay, so this is for Ridgeview Pod B, I'm sure y'all are familiar with that development. I'm going to go through, um, basically what this is, that the council is reviewing today, um, and how it should be reviewed. So with preliminary plat review, council is the land use authority, um, and this is an actual quote from state code, that a land use decision of a land use authority is an administrative act, even if the land use authority is the legislative body. So it's just clarifying that this is an administrative act, although y'all are called a legislative body. And for this, the applicant, as in the Boyer Group, has constructed phase one, that was Pod A, of this Ridgeview development, and made other improvement wide, or project-wide infrastructure improvements, um, making this project, well, okay, this project's zoning rights vested. Um, the requirements or conditions, um, that the council can impose upon this request are limited to what was approved in the PD District and in the development code. And preliminary plat review, just like I said before, is an administrative act, as it is implementing the legislative act of rezoning the property. This is the vicinity map, for those that don't know where Ridgeview is, it's just along North County Boulevard, and you have Canal Boulevard that east-west connect right there. Um, so, in the general plan, it's designated as a mixed-use development, something that Highland has been planning, was having this mixed use in that location. Um, back in May twenty fir, on May fir, twenty-first, excuse me, 2019, um, it was rezoned to be this Ridgeview planned development, um, and this rezon process was that legislative process, where public hearings were held, and the public was involved, and the council was able to, just like we did with shipping containers, um, create a law essentially that would come up with, um, certain designations or regulations for this project or this area of land. Um, that overall PD District established things like densities, the locations of densities, which I'll show a map in just a second, and the housing types, setbacks for those housing types, um, some architectural standards, and then also established major roadway locations and those cross-sections and other things, um, similar to these. This was, uh, basically, it's like, um, these are the density pods, it's like density and use pods for the master plan development. This is in the PD District. I'm sure y'all have seen this before, but this is where the locations of those densities were established. And so basically, if their preliminary plats conform to the regulations that were established with this PD, it is administrative, and they have the right to approval. Um, going on with the background, their, their final plats for Pod A, which is that southern portion, just like, south of Canal Boulevard and a little bit north, um, were approved back in June 16th, 2020, that's what you see going up right now. They've gotten several building permits for that pod. Um, and then back in September, we had a few minor amendments that were made, and were brought to the council for discussion, and just keeping y'all updated with those, with those amendments. Going over, this is a large preliminary plat, there are 424 units, so bear with me as I go through each of these plats as quickly as I can, as they're separated, uh, by builder. But overall, it's approximately seventy acres, um, the different housing types, we have townhomes, carriages, cottage lots, and estate lots. Um, the main accesses come from Canal Boulevard, North County Boulevard, and then we have 10-100 or Cedar Hills Drive, which is on the north end, just south of Lompeak High School. And the developers working on this project, you have the three that we worked, um, with before for Pod A, which are Boyer, David Weekly, and Ivory, and then we also have Lennar participating in this Pod B. So this is that overall preliminary plat, real quickly, I'll go, you have Ivory doing these estate and cottages, here's Lennar, this is the large community park, and then you have David Weekly up here in the corner, and then Boyer's Townhomes over here. These are Ivory's, they have a total of 145 lots in this plat, seventy-eight cottage and sixty-seven estate lots. Um, those are the minimum square footages, it comes out to be 4.5 lots per acre, which is compliant with, um, the density requirements from the PD District. And they are separating this out into seven construction phases, which I'll show a phasing plan real quickly later. This is Lennar's, uh, these are, they have eighty-six town, oh, one second, is it eighty-eight now? Eighty-eight towns, sorry, this was just suggested, and you just emailed me this, and it's eleven carriages. Yes, eleven carriages and eighty-eight towns, it was just suggested, which I'm sure it's extremely close. Is it 9.5 now? It's still the same, okay, 9.5 lots per acre, they're just putting this all out in one construction phase. They're wanting to get that done as soon as possible, I'll go into more detail on the timeline.
So you say there's ninety-nine lots then? You said eighty-eight plus eleven?
It would be ninety-nine, so you have one less carriage lot, two more, um, towns right here, which, as part of the P, PD District, we had a maximum of six units per, um, townhome building. Um, and so they still meet that six-unit max, so it's just going to be reflecting what's down south here, because you have six-six. This was five-five, but it's going to be six-six now here, too.
That's a, a park in the interior there, is that what that is?
I guess it is a park. This is David Weekly's, this is just on that intersection of 10-100 North and North County Boulevard, they have fifty-seven carriage lots. It's a, basically the same product that you see in Pod A that they're working on now. Um, this comes out to 6.9 lots per acre, and they're also just doing this in one construction phase once they finish out plat C and D that they're working on constructing right now. These are Boyer's Townhomes, they're 124 units, um, their townhomes that they're working on right now south are twelve units per acre, but this is just a little less, it comes out to be 10.4 units per acre. They're also just doing this as one construction phase. This is the plat for the community park, as well as Featherstone Drive, which is that main drive that Ivory's going to be putting in, um, as the first phase of development for this Pod B. This is the phasing I was talking about, um, that first phase is Boyer working on Featherstone Drive, and then Lennar, um, will be doing their phase one, which is just one phase, um, and then Ivory's phase one as well. Uh, Ivory's build out, this is probably going to be like four to five years is what we're, what they're looking at. Um, and then Boyer has stated that they'll work on fa, their phase about twelve to eighteen months from receiving preliminary approval, and like I said, Weekly will just start after they finish C and D. This is just the open space, their total developable acreage came out to be eighty-three point four acres, and so, um, their open space came out to be nineteen point three acres, which is 23.2% of that developable acreage, which, we call that out because it had to have, in the PD District, it had, they had to have at least 20% open space of the developable acreage, so that's taking out like road acreage, that sort of thing. The, this just reflects the major, well, the right-of-ways and trail connections. Um, Featherstone Drive, you have a sixty-nine foot right-of-way, you have like a connector trail on this west side of the road. Um, 10-100 is a sixty-six foot right-of-way, and then these purple right-of-ways is just the standard fifty-six foot right-of-way, that's what we have for local subdivisions in our 140, it's our standard. And then, uh, these pink ones are the twenty-eight foot private right-of-ways, so they'll be, well, not city-owned.
So we will be maintaining and plowing for snow the blue and the purple, but not the orange, red?
Not the pi, is that look, the pink? Okay.
Whatever.
Well, this is orange up here.
It looks pink to me, I don't...
Yes, that's correct.
Marley.
Marley.
Marley. There you go, there's Marley for you.
Gosh. Um, they added this old trail connection right here, that's kind of connecting Ivory over to this community park, or this area over to walking to Highland Glen. Um, and Pod A, that's where, right here, they dedicated a parcel right here for a trail connection to Highland Glen. Um, and then you have two trail connections that connect down to Murdock Canal Trail, which, again, was just in Pod A. Um, we did send out public hearing notices for this, um, but, well, we're not holding a public hearing at council, but for the planning commission meeting where the public hearing was held, we sent out the notices to, um, those properties within the 500-foot radius, um, and we did not receive any correspondence regarding it. This is so small, I was going to fix this, this is my thing I forgot to fix. But the planning commission and staff just recommend that the city council accept the findings stated in the staff report and approve the proposed preliminary plat. Um, I guess I can go through these stipulations really quickly, the last, um, okay. Six through eight, no, five through eight were stipulations that were just put on from, from the PD approval, and so it's just basically copied and pasted, making, making sure those stipulations are reiterated with the preliminary plat. Um, number nine was one that the planning commission, uh, recommended to add, and that was involving zero escaping along the Parkway detail, along North County Boulevard. Um, we've been working with Spencer, he sent us kind of an example today of, um, just what they were thinking. So they are agreeable to working, to working on that, doing zero escaping along the Parkway detail, um, but we can obviously continue working on the details for that. I think that was it, did y'all have any questions? Obviously Spencer is here, if you have any questions for him specifically, but, yeah.
I have questions for Spencer.
Okay.
I think he, he's came prepared, can answer some of them, I believe.
Hey again, I'm Spencer with the Boyer Company, and, um, you guys have a lot of open space to deal with, so, um, hopefully, we won't create that problem here. Um, I'm happy, it's been a long night, happy to answer any questions you have, go through anything, I'm, I'm just here to answer questions.
So, I have some questions, and I'd like to express my conflict of interest, I, I think the council already knows this, but I'm on the governing board of the USDC, um, the property that... Um, the property this development is being built on is, uh, former state land now because Boyer's bought most of it. And, uh, the purpose, there's always been kind of a noble purpose behind this land in that because of two authorizations done in the state legislature in two thousand sixteen and eighteen, I think that's right, Bill Exeter's here, he's kind of project manager for the USDC, but the money from the land sales here goes into a sustainability fund for the disabled, uh, to benefit the disabled, not only the USDC, but my understanding is that it may have benefit for all the disabled in the state with various programs and different things. But, uh, so originally, um, the state in two thousand thirteen, and I believe voted on in two thousand fourteen, came up with a master plan for all of this property and originally proposed, and it went through the state legislature, eleven hundred and thirty-five, if I remember, uh, residences, of which about eight hundred and thirty were permit buildings. Um, I think, uh, the Boyer Company has worked hard with the city of Highland, uh, to lower the density. I mean, I think we're down to, what, six eighty-nine? And it's still a very high-density development for Highland, but, um, my concerns was is that it would be high-quality, and, um, and I think Spencer wants to answer some questions about that. So the first question I have is, I think you have some examples of what some of these dwellings will look like when they're finished, because right now, because of construction delays and things, we're not getting a good feel for what things will look like when they're done. I think there's one, uh, what town?
Actually, one completed home. It's a, in the David Weekly neighborhood. Yeah, that's the blue house standing up in the middle of the neighborhood.
Right, and people go and look at that, there's another one being built, but I would like to kinda get a better idea what these structures will look like, how they fit in with kind of Highland. The second thing, I just have some questions about your open space and what amenities. I mean, you've got a four-point acre, uh, four-point-eight acre, uh, park in the center, and then you've got a lot of little open-space areas, and I just don't know what you do with those.
Yeah, no, those, those are great questions. Um, first of all, I, I would agree with what you, you said, you know, we started this process years ago, and initially, if you remember, our original proposal was to do some multifamily in, in the form of apartments. We heard loud and clear from the residents as we held open houses that they did not want that, that is not what Highland needs, so we eliminated those multi, the apartment buildings from our plan, and were capped at that density of twelve units per acre, where initially our proposal was for up to thirty-five units to the acre. You know, I commend the residents, I think they were right, looking back. Um, you know, this is prob- that's probably something that wasn't right for this area as you look on SR ninety-two, and they have some density there. I, I think that's great there, but probably not in this particular area. So, a lot of the feedback that the residents provided in that initial open-house session was very good, and staff, you know, we've worked collectively, as you mentioned, Councilman Smith, to, to come up with the plan and your feedback, and I think it's, it's worked out well. It is a higher density, for sure. Um, we have had positive feedback from the community as it's providing a housing type that previously has not been available in Hi- Highland. Um, there's a lot, as, you know, we've talked to these builders, there's a lot of interest in staying in Highland, downsizing, or moving from a larger, you know, first-time home buyers who are looking to stay in Highland, grew up in the area, or even looking for a townhome. So that's been positive in providing that diverse housing stock. But to, to get to your question is, to the open space, if you look back at our previous iteration of the plan, our park was four acres, we've increased that to four-point-eight acres. I know it seems trite, but that comes at the cost of, you know, ten mo- units that we pulled out of the park. We had originally some units that backed along that park, that just didn't feel right. Uh, that felt kind of like a contrived park, where we put it in as an afterthought. Really what we're doing now is, um, come up with a standalone park parcel. We've done the landscape design on it, I, I shared that. I think, uh, Councilman Ossler had asked some questions about that, and I have some renderings, should you like to look at that to see the direction that we're going.
I'd like to look at it.
Um, and so I'll maybe just hand those out.
Now, this is a private HOA maintained park.
It is. Um, we plan to maintain and own that, own this as, as an HOA. That being said, with small units, um, it's not so much the amount of open space, but it's the functionality of the open space. Um, a lot of turf grass doesn't make a lot of sense, so we've got some amenities in the form of pickleball courts for the community, walking trails, we've got some playgrounds, we have pavilions, different picnicking areas throughout. Um, the whole focus of the community is to have that park at the center of it. You can see that trail connectivity that Kelly presented. Everything kinda connects back to the park, and then from there disperses into network of trails. So it's, you know, it functions as a highway of, of trails and, and such, and it will get used, I think. Um, then, within the individual pods, um, you know, close to these, these units where they maybe won't walk to the Central Park, or that'll take too long, we plan to have tot lots and small picnicking areas that are more of a secondary park area for those residents of those specific pods to use. Again, those will be owned and maintained by the HOA, um, you know, just.
So is this gonna be posted? This is an HOA park, public's not invited, or how do you, how do you?
Enforcement will be up to the HOA. We have an HOA management company who does that for us. Um, look, we're not gonna be policing it out there, um, and say, hey, show us your residence.
This whole development's in different pods, is the whole development one big HOA?
It is, it is, with certain.
So all hundred and sixty-eighty-nine residences are part of one big, huge HOA?
Yeah, I'll give, the, the quick answer to that is we have a, a master HOA, and then we have benefited parcels for each pod within, so everybody pays a master due that goes towards the maintenance of Canal Boulevard, which we maintain, and the park, which we maintain, and some other communal areas. Um, those, they also pay a benefited area assessment, which is specific to their neighborhood that will pay for, as the mayor mentioned, snow removal in those pods, um, and landscaping in those pods. So it's not fair to make the residents as a whole that live on a single-family lot and the Ivory subdivision pay for snow removal over in the David Weekly neighborhood, so it's set up with a match, master HOA and benefitted parcel underneath that. Um, that being said, those benefited parcels will be, those open-space areas will be more for the benefit of those specific residents. As an example, the townhomes that are being built, you referenced on the, uh, over by where the Costa Vida and where the, um, Arby's are going, um, we, we are in for permit with the city on a clubhouse. That will have a clubhouse specific to that, um, that development. It'll be a twenty-four-hundred-square-foot clubhouse with a workout area. It will have, um, you know, some meeting space for the community. It'll have, uh, off, s- small office spaces, also has a pool, um, a fireplace.
Which, which pods this in?
Most of the one they're building now in the southeast corner. Is that correct?
It's southeast, yeah, it's not in it.
Okay.
It's being built now, it's by.
The one that has like the six units all put together, the real, the real dense product?
Yeah, and, and that's, you know, I brought an example just to, you know, again, show you to your point, what will that look like? It, it is hard to envision, and I agree with you, you see buildings being framed up. Quality is a huge issue for us. I think that goes back to the PD zone and the materials that are required. If you look in the PD zone, um, the, the townhomes that are being built are all hardy board, um, there's no stucco on those. Um, they're hardy board and brick. Um, you know, it's, it's a standard above, I think, what you'll see in most other places for townhomes, but again, going to the Highland brand and, and being a nice product, we've elected to, to spend a little bit more money to, to make them look nicer and look like they fit in with the rest of the city.
So, that Boyer piece on the southeast corner that's being built now, um, will you sell those individual units?
No, those are for rent units.
Or they're renters?
Those are for rent units.
But everything that's twelve units per acre for rent is not to be sold?
Yeah, uh, the Boyer owned and controlled.
The ones that's down by Costa Vida and Ar- Arby's, that, to the south of that, that's all gonna be rental.
Yeah, and we're controlling that, and the reason that we are doing that is we did our market research, we found that a lot of the buying pool, we're planning to buy those and rent those out. We run into issues in the past where half of the own, homeowners are renters, and half of the homeowners are owners. There's this bifurcation between those, where some of them take care of them, others don't. The renters typically don't take as good of care of their unit, and so we figured, you know what, let's control those, let's take care of the landscaping, let's take care of the upkeep on the outside. There's also issues with litigation on townhomes, um, there's significant issues right now, so the for-rent product, I think will keep it looking nicer, it will be, allow us to upkeep it, to provide the amenities that these people expect, and we think it'll actually create a better product and also fill a need in the market.
Okay, so Boyer has a great reputation, so I assume you'll take really good care of it.
Uh, that is, that is the plan, our name is right.
Is there gonna be a stressed concrete wall or something dividing that from the North County?
Yes, there is, uh, and that actually, yeah, you, the wall you've, you've seen on North County Boliv- Bol- excuse me, on Cedar, uh, Canal Boulevard will be prevalent through the, the rest of the community. That will be surrounding those, those homes.
Type of theme wall?
Yeah, theme wall, it'll match them all. Everything's tied together, the, what you'll see is, is elements of brick throughout, and that even in the commercial, we're matching, you know, we don't want it to all match and look like it's, it's planned, 'cause that will date the community, but there's theme elements that, that go throughout. You'll see it in the monumentation, you'll see some of that brick pop up in the, in the commercial, and you'll see, you know, um, in other areas throughout the community, just little highlights to let you know that you are in a, a planned community that has been thought out, but not everything needs to match. In fact, some diversity actually makes it look good, uh, with different styles. So we have put a lot of thought and paid a, a lot of architectural consultants to do that for us. So, I'm talking a lot, I.
Well, yeah, you're in. So I, I got a couple more questions, I'm sure the council has lots of other questions, but. So, up in the new Boyer part, uh, I can't remember which number it is, but it, it's just, uh, north and east of the park. So there, you have these little triangular kind of areas that are open-space areas. What are you doing with those? There's one between you and Weekly's, is that up there? Yeah. Yeah, I'm talking to that one and that one, yeah. What do you, what do you do with those?
First, in the Boyer, uh, in that Boyer area, we plan to do amenities similar to what we're doing down south, um, some sort of a clubhouse. Um, here's some renderings of the plans that were submitted to the city. I just provided those, should you want to look at those. Um, in the Weekly area, that's an open space where we, again, we ta- I talked about some tot lots, some gathering areas, pavilions, where we'll do those to more, to benefit those specific neighborhoods as opposed to the, a large park as a whole.
That's a regular area, that's about two acres, is that right?
Yeah.
Just shy of two acres?
Yeah.
So will that have a, a masonry fence bordering it? To, to make it private so that it's not?
Yeah. One of the conditions of our original approval was no driveways onto Featherstone Drive, and the reasoning for that, and I think it was wise, is that there'll be a lot of high school traffic.
Down there to?
Um, and so there was a fear of having driveways and, and kids riding bikes out into the street, and so we've oriented all of that in- internally into the subdivision. Some of those homes will, um, if you look.
So is there a trail along the Featherstone Drive?
There is, on the south side, on the west side is Featherstone Drive, you can see a trail right there. These homes are front on the Featherstone Drive, so they're not going to have a trail along Featherstone, um, as will these. Um, so you have that.
But there's a little Parkway detail along that, right? So it looks nice.
Yeah. Well, and that's, it, that's where landscaping will come into play and, and, um, yeah, Parkway detail. So to answer your question, Mayor, there will not be a wall in areas where the front door comes out?
Right.
Obviously, that's a little bit strange, but in the David Weekly pod, you can see that, those are the sides of homes.
Right.
So those will have a wall through that area.
That's what'll keep that park a, an amenity, amenity-specific to David Weekly there.
Yeah, yeah, so it'll, we'll have those, you know, pocket parks throughout the whole development, and, and with that trail connectivity, people will be able to move around, and the focal point will be that Central Park, um, there, and that's why we removed those ten lots from there. We figured, you know what, it doesn't feel like a community park if there's ten homes on it. It feels more like an extended backyard for those residents, who get very territorial over it, so it, it's a standalone park there.
Thank you.
So, what, I guess what I'm hearing here is you got one big development, but you have several communities?
Yeah.
All of which are a little bit different.
Yeah.
And so, I guess some of these communities are more designed for retired, uh, seniors?
Yeah.
Because they're not designed for large families, by?
No, they're not, well, I, um, we don't know, I mean, it surprises you, I think, if the builders would hear, the, the traffic that they've had, and, and I've had brief conversations at a high level with them, and I don't know the exact buyers, but it's a, a pretty good mix. Um, you know, the neighborhood, we alluded to the. I agree. You've got some thirty-foot lots along here, those will be large homes, I suspect, those will be, you know, used in other.
That looks down into the Highland Glen Park.
Those are the private lots, you have some of those in these areas as well, uh, if you, you know, go back to Northern County Boulevard. There, there'll be more dense homes, but we see families, we see retirees, we, we see all sorts of different people, so it's hard to quantify who lives in what. Um, a lot of it is driven by price point, um, and affordability, so that's, you know, but I, I think generally you're right, you're not gonna see big families in the smaller homes. That's probably an accurate assessment.
So, I, I have one last question, and I'm sorry, I'm kinda monopolizing this, but I just wanted to understand this better, because I live there, as you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
And so I'm gonna have to deal with the traffic and, and, and this community. In fact, you know, from a church standpoint, the south part's in my ward, so I mean, I'm gonna get to know a lot of these people for the time being. I guess my question is, is you've got not, a lot of nice amenities you're putting in, which are controlled by your HOA, um, and they'll be posted as this HOA, but this large development, a lot of them, and I think you've provided some connectivity into the Highland Glen Park, but I assume the fifteen-hundred people or whatever who will live in this development will be using the Highland Glen Park a lot. And I'm just wondering, you know, we kinda struggle with maintaining that park, I'm just wondering, uh, is there anything that you folks can do to help us with that park? I mean, since your residents will be using a lot of trail connectivity, I mean.
Yeah, no, I think that's a fair assessment.
Spencer, you already gave us a little bit of money for to.
Yeah, we did.
There are a couple thousand that's been given to the city.
Yeah, we did, we provided that, and we, you know, we wanna be proactive and, and involved in communities where we develop. I mean, we don't see it as a, a turn, turn and burn opportunity. We, we'll be invested in this area for a long time with the retail.
And I think trails, connectivity and different things can be important.
And so to be fair, I, I do think that you're probably right, there will be an impact of our residents utilizing city services. Um, obviously, they pay, you know, property taxes just like everybody else does. Um, you know, we pay park impact fees, none of which will be reinvested in our community. Uh, we'll pay, I don't know what the exact park impact fee is, but on eight hundred units, I don't think any of, we're using any park impact fees in our community.
So, will the park impact fees, so they go to pay off the bond, don't they? Will they go into the Highland Glen Park? How does that work?
As you know, park impact fees are for new facilities. They're not to recondition or, uh, old facilities or repair old facilities, that's illegal. Um, in this case, uh, the council's determined that the new facilities, uh, because we did a bond for our new facilities, that's, uh, where we're spending that money, to repay the bond.
So, so we're repaying the bond with our park impact fees?
Correct.
Okay.
So, to, to get back to your question, I think if there's an impact and we're materially impacting it, we're, we're open to be part of a solution, and, you know, if our residents are going to use a trail to connect down to Highland Glen Park, we're, we're happy to participate and be a part of that solution. Um, you know, and if there's something that we can do to be a better neighbor, you know, we're, we're, and, yeah, we're, we're interested in having those conversations and contributing to that. Um, you know, that's certainly something that, you know, will be there, our residents will be using, and we're, we're open to that.
Yeah, I did, I just kinda worried, because, you know, your impact fees pay off our bond, which is nice, and so that frees up money in the future, but it just seems like there'll be a lot of use of the Highland Glen Park.
Yeah, there, there will, and there'll be, you know, and I, on the inverse, there'll be a lot of people who come to the park in our community and aren't, you know, residents of the community, but, you know.
But you'll have it posted, though, that it's an HOA.
Yeah, but I don't know as if we'll be out there enforcing it. I, I don't know if the HOA is gonna hire an officer to sit out there and, and check addresses of folks, and as long as it's not a problem, you know, we're, we're okay with that. If it becomes overwhelming for the residents, I think at that point we'll try to do something.
Those kind of a joint solution?
Yeah.
Okay, I don't have any other questions. Anyone else?
I have a couple. Uh, fiber in the area, you guys running fiber throughout everything. Is that a specific user, or is that gonna be shared fiber? Let's assume the city in the next ten years decides to add fiber, is that lines that we can tie into?[1681.67]
Yeah, so we, um, actually have, in our existing phases, we both have, we have both Utopia and Comcast. We found it's better to have two providers than one. Um, in the past in communities where we had one provider.
So you're saying Utopia will be here?
They are already here.
Okay, so they, they will be here in this area that Highland residents will be able to access Utopia here.
So to be clear, Utopia laid the backbone. They will sublease their fiber to another provider.
Okay.
Who will go out and market to the residents. Now, it's a market-based solution, so residents can choose either Utopia's provider or they can choose Comcast.
So that, what happens if in the future the city wants to do their own fiber? Is it something we'd have to go lease those from Utopia? Let's assume Utopia's the user. We could, is that take care of that issue?
I don't know, um, is the honest answer to that. Um, I'm, I'm not sure. That's, we've been working with Utopia. Roger over there was our original individual we contacted. And they were pro, very proactive about wanting to be in this area and in this community because they have facilities off of North County, so they wanted to pull from there.
I mean, naturally, we're starting to see a lot of communities starting to look for fiber for their residents, and so I just thought that was something.
Well, and I will say.
Be something that we would discuss with those private entities, whether it's Comcast or Utopia.
And that is the number, interestingly enough, when you talk about amenities, the number one amenity is, is fiber, and they want one gig. It's, it's very interesting. That is the top of the list for amenities.
That's good to know.
Yeah.
I mean, I think it's important for us to, um, as I go down Canal Boulevard, I notice your fencing color is very plain. Are you planning to?
Yes, and I was hoping you wouldn't bring that up. Um, we have not. It's been six months and Sherwin, we, Sherwin-Williams ran out of our paint color. And we cannot get any more paint. And we did get a shipment for the base coat. So we have not gotten the rest of the paint. And I can show you a list of text messages. You can scroll down for all this trash.
Minutes and minutes. Every time I drive, I hope that's not the color that stays.
So if you, if it drives you crazy that we're on them, you know, if not daily, weekly. So it, it will all match and it will all be consistent throughout the entire community.
I can attest, I've been to four Sherwin-Williams today. They are out of paint.
It's, it's absolutely insane. Add it to the list.
Now, you know, Spencer, you brought up about the park ownership, and I think it's important we kind of get this clear as a council. When it bear first came through, I asked the question, will the park be a public park or an HOA? And at that time, I believe you said it would be a public park. But as we're going forward and it sounds like it will be an HOA park, I just, when it was approved, I remember mentioning that.
We're open to, I, I guess I should step back. We're open to making it a public park. I guess the conversation was the maintenance of it. I went hearing of the city's trouble maintaining.
Correct.
And those came up in multiple conversations.
Yeah, the staff's over here laughing.
So it was, it, we, we're fine with it, but I think the level of service that the residents would expect for a park like that may not be something that the city can provide at this point. So we elected to take it, take it as an HOA park.
Does everyone understand that when it was approved, it was like, we're going forward as an HOA park being maintained by the HOA?
And, and to be, you know, if, if that's a conversation that we need to have, we are open to, to making it a public park. It's the maintenance component that's been a bit challenging in the past.
I guess, how much are you charging that you have a ma, I call it, it's kind of like Daybreak. You have a master HOA, then you have maybe your homeowner open. So what's, what's your HOA, if you wanted to say, what's going to be the average price?
Yeah, you're putting me on the spot, but I believe the master HOA is about $30 per month per user. Um, and then the benefited assessment area will depend on the level of service. To the south, um, again, this is more than you want to know, but we've also found through experience that full maintenance is really important on small homes. Um, a lot of these people are living in small homes because they don't want to maintain it. And so if you put maintenance back on them, they don't own lawn mowers, they don't own any of the equipment to maintain, and it ends up looking really terrible. So the, the, the areas to the south of Canal Boulevard where you see that home built will be fully maintained by the HOA. I believe those dues with snow removal, uh, maintenance, tree replacement, everything else, they come out at roughly 100 a month for that sub.
So, so the all of HOA would be about $139 or?
$130, yeah. And it may be when it's, um, yes, about $130. It's in that range. $130 to $180, it could be upwards of that if.
And, and some of these are just more curious. On the David Weekly, do you know what kind of the starting prices they're asking there?
I don't know. I, I have heard various numbers. I know that they were quoting in the 500s, but I've heard from other people that they're now into the 600s as they did releases on those small single family.
The blue David Weekly home started at five and it's now six?
I have heard that. I don't know.
I know.
Do you, yeah, you can probably talk. I think people here.
They start at, they, they, on the website, it says, starting at $5.89. There's no such thing. That is not available.
And I know they've had to, again, supply constraints, they've had to raise, well, they've raised prices to slow down sales. They've had, I do know that they've had strong sales out of the gate. There's a strong demand for product in Highland and specifically small lot. Um, Ivory has had, I've talked to their, this sales manager, and they've had a strong release. And they're kind of having to control the release of product so that they're not 24 months out on being able to deliver it, because that's the challenge.
It's more to the tune of 700.
Yeah. Yeah.
Why do you, and these are just curiosity. It's up to you that what will you guys be renting your, uh, pod by the Arby's? Like you, you say you're going to keep all those townhomes rentals. Out of curiosity, what type of market values that could be rented?
So rents, it would be determined, we'll launch those and establish those depending on user demand. I mean, if no one shows up and wants to rent anything, they're going to be really low rents. If we have strong demand, you're going to adjust to the market.
Not your guess.
Um, I, I honestly don't know. I, I think that the last market study that our, because we have property managers who do that. I'm not in the rental business, so we ha, we hire property management firms. We, we hire contractors to men, we act, we essentially act as the bank and the owner. Um, but I think they'll probably start in the high, that'll like 15 to 1,800, somewhere in there.
And those are like three bedrooms?
Three bedroom, two and a half bath. They do have unfinished, some of them have finished basements, though. They all have basements. Some of them are finished.
Painted or unpainted?
Polstering light?
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, um, they will all be painted.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank, thank you for, I mean, I understand that was kind of off the.
No, no, no.
So your trails, can you just kind of point where some of your trail, you know, just on the, the drawings where your trails are going to be at?
So what we elect is, tell you what now, there's a trail connection to Highland Glen Park right there, so we can carry a trail up here. And when I, I want to be clear, when I say trail on there, it's not like a 30-foot wide trail with 10-foot grass strip. It's just a, a wider park strip.
So you're not going to have like sidewalks are going to be classified. Is your sidewalks asphalt trail? Is that what?
So we actually, we actually elected to keep it concrete because it's, the maintenance is just better long-term of concrete over asphalt. Asphalt bows and buckles and, and just.
But you connected into the Murdoch Canal Trail, and then you've brought it across where it goes over to the, um, Highland Glen Park.
We'll actually have.
You've already connected in that area down in the south part of your development.
And those are.
And a lot of people use it.
They do, and we'll have two more of those as we finish out. We haven't put those in yet. There'll be one from the David Weekly neighborhood and then one from the townhome neighborhood.
Right.
Um, we had to go to Jordan Valley users and ultimately federal agencies to get those approvals, and that took a long time. But, um, there will, along this west side of Featherstone Drive, I believe it's an eight-foot park, we have an, what we're calling an extended park strip. So instead of a five-foot sidewalk, it's an eight-foot walk. Um, it's, it's wider. You can walk side by side on it, and then there's a wider park strip on there. So we're, we're calling that a trail, so I don't want to create the impression that there's this designated area with no houses that a trail is going through. It's just a, a, a wider, for lack of a better term, a wider park strip.
So are the names set like Featherstone Drive? It can't be changed to Cougar Boulevard or? I'm curious. This is just a curious question.
And it's a legit.
Ossler Way. Do Ossler Way.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. We're taking requests. Um, the interior roads are not named yet, so we will take requests for those. Featherstone Boulevard is a, uh, is a.
USDC name.
Yeah.
It's a lot, I'm sorry.
It's a USDC name.
Yes.
The Featherstones were a big.
I, I was just trying to. The Featherstone family, I believe, originally owned this land out in this area, so.
So that was the original owner, Scott, is that right?
So you should just sell naming rights to Kirk.
Yeah.
Start going through the quarterbacks, Kate.
Yeah, there you go. There you go.
So one little thing that, and maybe the staff can answer this, and maybe, uh, Mr. Spencer, but I got to keep this Spencer straight. So with this development, there's 112 acres approximately, and they had to bring in three acre feet of water, of surface water, uh, for the PI system. I would think this higher dense neighborhood won't use as much PI water. Would, does that then provide extra kind of water shares that we can draw on as a city, or am I, is my thinking off there?
They, in this area, they also had to give some water for the culinary.
Uh-huh.
Um, so, uh, and, and.
Pressurized irrigation water too, right?
Yeah, they provided both, water for culinary and water for pressurized irrigation. So in this case, you know, there's a trade-off, right? You're getting a little more to use the culinary system because you've got a higher density. You can use a little more culinary than you are on a lower density in that regard, less pressurized. So we've settled up with them what the water rights are, uh, you know, and what's required, and, and they're providing those, um, you know. Uh, so I guess my general thought is it's going to work out and wash. We're going to lose, use a little more, uh, culinary and a little less secondary. So it just depends on which system it's going in.
But our pulmonary, or yeah, pulmonary, geez. Um, but our pressurized irrigation has been more stress though than the culinary, hasn't it?
Correct.
Yeah.
So Scott, as we talk water shares, did they bring in like AF, AF shares? Did they bring improper water shares?
Yes, to both.
So they brought in stored water?
Yeah, we, we require, uh, fit, we'll only allow 50% canyon shares or, or flowing shares. And then the other 50% have to be, uh, storage water, which is pro water.
And we also provided the site for the booster station to expand the, the secondary water station, correct?
Correct.
You're in the process of expanding.
And then Spencer, on your commercial timing, you've done where Costa Vida and Arby's app, I believe you have is another eight acres over in this.
It's about six, seven-ish.
Is, what's the anticipation timing on that? Are you?
So it depends how many oil chain stations and gas stations you want in the city. Um, those, we have been, had those folks knocking down our doors, gas stations, oil and car washes. We could have filled that out years ago. We're trying to be selective. Um, we heard the council that food users were desired, um, so we stuck to that. I'll be honest with you, it was a little bit tricky to find food users who would come in with the closed on Sunday ordinance. Um, but the ones we have are well aware of it. They know that. They're prepared to comply with that. Um, we've put, we've talked, we made a list of a couple other users who could go to the other side. It's a little bit bigger, so we want to be a little more thoughtful about it. This site, you know, that we're doing is small, so, you know, after two users, it kind of figured itself out. The other one, we want to be a little more judicious, if you will, about who we put in there and how we put it in. I think it'll be a mix based on what we're hearing of maybe some professional office, some people who want to work in, in the Highland area, some food users and maybe some, a small retail component. But it'll be more neighborhood commercial as opposed to.
I'm not opposed to the gas station. Can't buy gas in Highland except for one place, and you can't get into them.
Some of them, um, we actually, there are better gas operators than others. There's some that are, you know, just want to do gas and some that want to do, I won't, uses, but like a maverick who does a better job of their, um, you know, their amenities and their design. There's some that don't do that good of a job. Um, so we're, again, where we own those, we're trying to be thoughtful about that. And also, it's the front door to our project. Um, we want to make sure that the front door looks nice.
Looks great.
You know, I, I think, you know, I think a quick syrup, I mean, like you're, but I, we're here from, you know, residents, they'd love to be able to sit down a place. I understand most restaurants want to have a drive-through in some format or a pickup door.
Especially now, right?
But we, we are hearing from residents, they'd like to probably have a sit-down. I think that's what we're.
A sit-down restaurant.
Yeah, kind, kind of something that way and.
And we're certainly open as a, as a council, if you hear and, and, you know, talk to people. Um, you know, and as your future role as mayor, and mayor's done a great job of this, reaching out and advocating for the city. You know, we're happy to have those conversations and talk to people.
So that's in those other eight acres.
That is, yeah, that's.
And then, but you've got two commercial areas behind the two fast food places.
That's right. And we actually are working on a contract with a user. It's a dental group, um, who, that site fits their need. It's small enough where it's going to be tough for a big user, but there are small user who won't create a lot of traffic. And I think that'll be a good fit for them. Have other facilities here in Utah County.
So do you think you're going to start, we're going to see something in the next year on the commercial component?
On which side?
On, on the one that's on the north side of Canal.
I don't know. Um, obviously, we'd like to move something as soon as possible. I would, to be completely candid, we'd like to finish the Costa Vida and the Arby's. Once we get that done, kind of pivot our focus to the other site. Um, I, I do think there'll be users there. We have been surprised at the demand. I, I mean, I guess our takeaway is the city's doing a great job at what they do. Um, Highland has a strong brand. People want to live here. People want to do business here. And, you know, we want to, we want to be a part of that. So we're trying to be thoughtful about it and, and just make sure we make good decisions.
Now, Nathan, just to help clarify, we have at this current time a road fee and a public safety fee. Are all these units paying the same as, as, uh, is across the board, or is there, there's no difference in anything, right?
No, there isn't. They'd be all pay the same fee.
Okay.
Those are my questions.
Any other comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion. I move that the city council accept the findings and approve the preliminary plat for Ridgeville, uh, Pod B subject to the nine stipulations recommended by the planning commission and staff, which were stipulated in Kelly's presentation.
I'll second it. Um, Tim, Tim.
No, Tim, Tim.
Tim, second by, motion by Scott, second by Tim. I am ready to vote. And while we're doing that, I will, uh, a mayor's prerogative. We will hold a short break and resume at 10:30.
Okay, and I'll thank you before you even vote. I would appreciate the opportunity to work with the city. You guys.
It wasn't as painful as you thought.
Thanks, Spencer.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Break. Sorry, I missed.
Mr. Spencer, have you been, I think one of the best examples I see of zero escaping, I, I look at it every day, is I see is zero escaping all the way around American Fork Hospital. In fact, they just killed all their lawn. And in the back part of the hospital, it's already zero escaped. It's been that way for two or three years. And it's really quite attractive and very low maintenance. And I think they use very little water because I think what's watered is the drip system. So I don't know if you've looked down there, but they've made some kind of nice things.
I actually does, I actually does a really nice job.
Yeah. And I was just, so that's kind of an example. I don't know how expensive it would be, but I know the maintenance is minimal.
You know, another area is Burt Brothers tires also totally zero scape. And I think they've kind of, with their coloring and that, I think it looks kind of nice too.
Yeah, I, we, and I know Kelly's working on this, is, you know, in a forthcoming meeting, um, we're going to be discussing the zero scape, zero scape standards for the city. Um, and so, yeah, we would appreciate, you know, the different notations of, you know, hey, we think this is a nicely designed, or we think this is a lot nicer than design. Um, you know, as it pertains to, to the city areas, uh, you know, sometimes there is a little different consideration than maybe a little more manicured areas around the buildings if we're talking long parkways, et cetera. But, uh, we would appreciate those notations moving forward as we look towards coming up with that standard.
So you've done some nice zero escaping along Canal Boulevard, or at least sections of it. And I know Dry Creek was outweeding it today. That was interesting.
Yeah, I'm grateful for that. The Siberian elms are amazing how quickly they can grow.
I'm all for this and I'm glad that this has been put forth and especially when we're having a lot more development, so.
If you only commotion on this.
I'll make a motion.
Anybody from council has questions? I would entertain a motion. Go for it.
I move that the city council approve the ordinance adopting the 2021 updates to the standard drawings and design criteria for public improvements.
I'll second it.
Motion by Kim, second by Scott. Ready for a vote? All in favor or, it's a race. I see. Computers. And we're done. And that passes unanimously. Okay. Andy, you're up again. Uh, discussion on the MAGU funded forty-eight West study and its potential future implications.
Yeah. So, uh, Kelly, can we go to, or Aaron, I'm not sure who's controlling, can we go to the first picture? Um, so what we're going to discuss is, uh, some of the congestion that we see on, uh, forty-eight hundred West. Uh, this picture was taken, um, about a week ago, uh, on, on the morning, uh, in the morning commute, about seven thirty AM. Uh, this is taken at eleven two hundred north. So you're already, you know, about, uh, you know, a thousand feet north of SR ninety-two or Temenogus Highway. And you can see that the queue of cars, it's a little difficult because it was right in the headlight time where there was enough light to take the photo, but you can see the queue of cars still extends another thousand feet up the road. So we've got an observed problem on forty-eight hundred West. Uh, we've got the next slide. Uh, this picture was taken, uh, in the afternoon queue. Again, whoops, we lost our pictures. Uh, about a week ago. Um, and this is heading southbound. So this is about four o'clock in the afternoon. The road that you're seeing in the, in the foreground is eleven two hundred. Um, and so we have an observed problem on forty-eight hundred West, both in the morning and the evening queue. Um, a little more background on that. Um, Mountain Land Association of Governments, um, many of you know, and for some of the audience members who don't know, um, they're what's called a metropolitan planning organization. And, uh, they, uh, provide the services, um, to provide the cohesive travel and transportation plans, among other things. They do many things and many citizen services, but for this purpose, what we're talking about tonight, they provide the, the planning services for the regional transportation plans. Those are both roadway, active transportation, transit planning, um, you know, all the various modes of, of transportation. They also, um, administer the funding services, right? Uh, kind of the federal funding, um, and some of the, uh, local funding options are administered through MAG. Um, so, uh, Mountain Land, at the request of the cities, undertook, uh, a study to study SR ninety-two. And, uh, many, SR ninety-two being Temenogus Highway, so I should back up. And they studied all the intersections from, uh, Center Street and Lehigh to American Fork Canyon. Uh, and they studied not only, uh, the existing intersections, but also potential connections. Um, and out of that study came recommendations for improve, improvements at a few intersections. One of them was forty-eight hundred West. Um, and south of SR ninety-two, forty-eight hundred West is a state road corridor, which is North County Boulevard. North of SR ninety-two, it's a city road. Um, now, out of that study by, uh, MAG, came a recommendation to, uh, improve the intersection at forty-eight hundred West, um, slash North County Boulevard, um, to be four lanes, uh, or five lanes, sorry. Two lanes south, two lanes northward, center turn lane in this section that we're looking at in the photos. Um, can you go to the next slide? And, uh, so this would be kind of a typical cross-section of what we're looking at there where, um, you've got two lanes, two travel lanes each direction and then a center turn lane. Um, as a result of that study, the cities of Highland and Alpine, uh, asked, uh, MAG to further study, um, what would this corridor look like if we implemented something like we're seeing there? And how much would it cost? Um, logical outcomes or, you know, the results of suggesting that we ought to have those lanes east direction. Well, how are we going to get there? Um, and so, uh, at the, with funding of MAG and the participation of UDOT, it was the MAG and UDOT study, um, they extended their contracts with the consultants and had them look at this corridor. So the consultants, uh, we initially looked at a corridor that was maybe a little bit wider, that, uh, also in addition to what you're seeing on the screen, um, had bike lanes each direction, had a little bit larger park strips. Um, and, uh, when we looked at that in detail, the impacts were, uh, severe to a number of the residents. And so, um, the cross-section that we're looking at is what was arrived at as kind of the more, um, constrained section, uh, both from the economic perspective and impact to the residents. Uh, so, uh, from an extent, expense standpoint, um, and also just a, uh, construction sequencing and need standpoint, project, or proposed project was divided into three phases. If you can go to the next slide. So what we're looking at is the red phase on the screen would be phase one, which would extend, uh, the intersection improvements. Um, and, uh, not only are they proposing intersection improvements, uh, in a north-south, but also a few improvements east-west on, on SR ninety-two. Um, the improvements would extend, uh, if you include the trail, um, from where the, uh, trail crossing is on North County Boulevard at, at the American Fork River. Um, and, and they extend northward from there. Uh, they would, phase one, the red would run all the way to Healy Boulevard in Alpine. Um, and then from there, the second phase would be, uh, the green, which would, uh, run from Healy to Ridge Drive in Alpine. And then the third phase would be the yellow, which would take it into the roundabout in Alpine. Um, the most immediate need, um, is in that, uh, section or corridor, both the intersection improvements at, uh, North County Boulevard and, and Temenogus Highway, and then also in that corridor from, uh, Temenogus Highway to eleven two hundred. That's the area where it's almost always congested. And then in certain peak hours, as we saw in the photos, it does extend northward of eleven hundred, eleven two hundred. Um, so, uh, if we go to the next slide real quick, touched on the trail. Um, so right now, uh, on the, on the photo that you're seeing, the red is trail system. The purple are bike lanes. Um, you'll notice that in the section that's clouded, um, you've got bike lanes that extend to Temenogus Highway, but you really don't have any trail connection there. And you really have nothing from, uh, Temenogus Highway, you know, on northward. So this, this project, in addition to meeting the, the, uh, car travel demand, also meets the, uh, active transportation demand. Um, as you would guess, um, it, it does, uh, involve impacts to residents. And that's very sensitive and we understand that's sensitive. And we want to, uh, be emphatic that at this point, nothing's been decided for any given impact on any residents. This is just a study to simply answer the question, well, since we know we have a need, what potentially would it look like? And what would it cost? Um, so we did, they did do specific layouts. If we can go to the next slide, um, where, um, it's a little tough to see, I know from the audience perspective, um, as to how the layout would impact, uh, you know, the different residents on the, on the corridors. Um, but that, that information is available. Um, there are.
And so, yeah, we would appreciate, you know, the different notations of, you know, hey, we think this is nicely designed, or we think this is a lot nicer than design. You know, as it pertains to the city areas, you know, sometimes there is a little different consideration than maybe a little more manicured areas around the buildings, if we're talking long parkways, et cetera. But we would appreciate those notations moving forward as we look towards coming up with that standard.
So you've done some nice zero scape along Canal Boulevard, or at least sections of it. And I know Dry Creek was outweeding it today. That was interesting.
Yeah, I'm grateful for that. The Siberian elms are amazing, how quickly they can grow.
I'm all for this, and I'm glad that this has been put forth, and especially when we're having a lot more development, so.
If you only commotion on this.
Only commotion.
Anybody from council has questions? I would entertain a motion. Go for it.
I move that the city council approve the ordinance adopting the 2021 updates to the standard drawings and design criteria for public improvements.
I'll second it.
Motion by Kim, second by Scott. Ready for vote? All in favor? Or, let's erase...
I see.
...the computers. And we're done. And that passes unanimously. Okay, Andy, you're up again. Discussion on the MAGU dot funded 48 West study and its potential future implications.
So, Kelly, can we go to, or Aaron, I'm not sure who's controlling, can we go to the first picture? So what we're going to discuss is some of the congestion that we see on 4800 West. This picture was taken about a week ago on the morning, in the morning commute, about 7:30 AM. This is taken at 11200 North, so you're already, you know, about, you know, a thousand feet north of SR92 or Tempanogus Highway. And you can see that the queue of cars, it's a little difficult because it was right in the headlight time where there was enough light to take the photo, but you can see the queue of cars still extends another thousand feet up the road. So we've got an observed problem on 4800 West. We've got the next slide. This picture was taken in the afternoon queue, again, whoops, we lost our pictures, about a week ago. And this is heading southbound, so this is about four o'clock in the afternoon. The road that you're seeing in the foreground is 11200. And so we have an observed problem on 4800 West, both in the morning and the evening queue. A little more background on that. Mountainland Association of Governments, many of you know, and for some of the audience members who don't know, they're what's called a metropolitan planning organization, and they provide the services to provide the cohesive travel and transportation plans, among other things. They do many things and many citizen services, but for this purpose, what we're talking about tonight, they provide the planning services for the regional transportation plans. Those are both roadway, active transportation, transit planning, you know, all the various modes of transportation. They also administer the funding services, right? Kind of the federal funding and some of the local funding options are administered through MAG. So Mountainland, at the request of the cities, undertook a study to study SR92. And many, SR92 being Tempanogus Highway, so I should back up. And they studied all the intersections from Center Street and Lehigh to American Fork Canyon. And they studied not only the existing intersections, but also potential connections. And out of that study came recommendations for improvements at a few intersections. One of them was 4800 West. And south of SR92, 4800 West is a state road corridor, which is North County Boulevard. North of SR92, it's a city road. Now, out of that study by MAG came a recommendation to improve the intersection at 4800 West slash North County Boulevard to be four lanes, or five lanes, sorry, two lanes south, two lanes northward, center turn lane in this section that we're looking at in the photos. Can you go to the next slide? And so this would be kind of a typical cross-section of what we're looking at there, where you've got two lanes, two travel lanes each direction, and then a center turn lane. As a result of that study, the cities of Highland and Alpine asked MAG to further study, what would this corridor look like if we implemented something like we're seeing there? And how much would it cost? Logical outcomes, or, you know, the results of suggesting that we ought to have those lanes east direction, well, how are we going to get there? And so at the, with funding of MAG and the participation of UDOT, it was the MAG and UDOT study, they extended their contracts with the consultants and had them look at this corridor. So the consultants, we initially looked at a corridor that was maybe a little bit wider, that also, in addition to what you're seeing on the screen, had bike lanes each direction, had a little bit larger park strips. And when we looked at that in detail, the impacts were severe to a number of the residents. And so the cross-section that we're looking at is what was arrived at as kind of the more constrained section, both from the economic perspective and impact to the residents. So from an expense standpoint, and also just a construction sequencing and need standpoint, project, or proposed project was divided into three phases. If you can go to the next slide. So what we're looking at is the red phase on the screen would be Phase One, which would extend the intersection improvements. And not only are they proposing intersection improvements in a north-south, but also a few improvements east-west on SR92. The improvements would extend, if you include the trail, from where the trail crossing is on North County Boulevard at the American Fork River, and they extend northward from there. They would, Phase One, the red, would run all the way to Healy Boulevard in Alpine. And then from there, the second phase would be the green, which would run from Healy to Ridge Drive in Alpine. And then the third phase would be the yellow, which would take it into the roundabout in Alpine. The most immediate need is in that section or corridor, both the intersection improvements at North County Boulevard and Tempanogus Highway, and then also in that corridor from Tempanogus Highway to 11200. That's the area where it's almost always congested. And then in certain peak hours, as we saw in the photos, it does extend northward of So if we go to the next slide real quick, touched on the trail. So right now, on the photo that you're seeing, the red is trail system, the purple are bike lanes. You'll notice that in the section that's clouded, you've got bike lanes that extend to Tempanogus Highway, but you really don't have any trail connection there, and you really have nothing from Tempanogus Highway, you know, on northward. So this, this project, in addition to meeting the car travel demand, also meets the active transportation demand. As you would guess, it does involve impacts to residents, and that's very sensitive, and we understand that's sensitive, and we want to be emphatic that at this point, nothing's been decided for any given impact on any residents. This is just a study to simply answer the question, well, since we know we have a need, what potentially would it look like? And what would it cost? So we did, they did do specific layouts. If we can go to the next slide, where, it's a little tough to see, I know from the audience's perspective, as to how the layout would impact, you know, the different residents on the corridors, but that information is available. There are six homes that are directly impacted that are Highland residents at this point, and two of those are a little more severely impacted. This is not a final design. This is not exactly what will happen. This is a layout, a concept layout to answer those primary questions. But certainly something that as we look forward, it's something that those residents will have logical questions for us. And right now, we don't know if we even have a project. What we have, what we know we have is a need. We know we have a need. We see the congestion, and so this is trying to come up with a start down that path of, well, how do we answer that need? So where does this all put us? Maybe, you know, if we back up for a minute, Mountainland Association of Governments, every two years, we look at another funding cycle for roadway improvements. And when you look at that funding cycle, we're just starting one right now, but, you know, we're in 2021, we're talking about improvement dollars for '25 and '26. So the funding cycle is always four years out. So right now, in order to get our name on the list, if you will, for consideration, we had to turn in this project about a week ago to just get to the first step. And the first step is just to sit down in a discussion with the MAG staff to say, well, what is your project? To some extent, MAG knows about this project because they were on the, you know, the committee that studied the highway and things, but, you know, in an application sense, they don't. And so we, as staff, went ahead and put our name in the hat, if you will, to say, we'd like you to talk to us about this project. Now, from there, that funding cycle continues in various steps and various narrowing down of the projects till the projects are finally selected next August. And again, if you're selected, then you're looking at like, in 2025 or 2026. Had we not put our name in the hat, then you would be looking at the soonest at '26, or '27 and '28.
So just, let me inject you, if you, if you get on that selected list in August, what they do is they look at the money available, and then they start at the top, and they're prior, it's a prioritized list, and they'll get down to where the funding ends. So you're, even if you're at that point in time a lower priority, if things change over the next couple of years, because you're on that list, if additional funding comes in and you can do more projects, like did happen the last couple of years, it's important that you're on the list, because if you're not on the list, then you're waiting until two years out.
If we hadn't turned it in last, you know, last week, we were for sure waiting two years. You know, and so...
So even if you're on the list, my point is, you might not get funded.
Right.
And, but if you're on that list, then you have a way better chance of getting funded earlier next go-around.
Correct. Yeah, and, and sometimes with the projects, it takes a little while to kind of help the county just appreciate the need, right? Some of them take a little while to just kind of work their way through the system, and sometimes it takes you a couple of rounds. So, you know, right now, tonight's discussion is just simply informational for the council, for the public, that this is being considered. Are there steps in the very near future where we need to involve residents? Absolutely. We, as staff, only received the study results, the final study results, you know, a couple of days before it was time to turn into, into Mountainland. So this is the first chance we've had to inform the council with regard to this. So, you know, what, what we would, where's the path forward on this? We will be meeting with MAG as staff this week to discuss that first, hey, what's your project? And we'll keep the council informed of that reaction and how things look from the collecting, collective funding cycle. And if things look like this can progress, we will need to, you know, have additional discussions in forthcoming meetings. If, if it is going to progress, we will ultimately have to, and the council's supportive, you know, tonight's just the discussion, just to get the discussion going and people thinking about it. But we will ultimately have to amend our transportation plan to change this from a three, three-lane corridor to a five-lane corridor, because Mountainland will not consider us for funding, won't give us, right now, we're in the idea round, then we get to the concept round. We can't get out of the concept round without having this on our master plan and the council officially embracing the project from that sense. Yes, there is a need for this to be a five-lane corridor. So that, those would be steps that we'd be looking at after the first of the year. Right now, we're just looking at, you know, MAG, how does this project, project size up, if you will, compared to what you're seeing in the, in the hopper this year, you know, in this round of funding. But as we look forward, we will need to involve residents, you know, in those discussions, and there will need to be, you know, more serious consideration as to, okay, are we serious? Are we going to vote for this? Are we moving ahead with this? So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about the corridor, the study, where we are, et cetera.
This diagram's small.
Yeah.
Is the trail just on one side?
It's just on the east side.
And how wide is that trail? Does it accommodate bikers and pedestrians?
Yeah, it's a multi-use trail. What we had considered is that the outside lanes would also be marked as the share of the road or the shero markers for the, the real aggressive bikers, because real aggressive bikers don't really want to ride on the multi-use trails that are right along the roads. They don't like to do competition with the pedestrians, and then also the driveways, et cetera. The more recreational bikers will, will use the trails, and certainly kids would use the trails. The kids and families would use the trail. But it's a 10-foot trail, multi-use trail, so, you know, it can accommodate people passing, et cetera.
So, I mean, they're looking at this road, but I've heard a lot of rumors about a road that is farther east that goes through the gravel pit area. Is that anywhere in the planning stage or discussion stage, or?
That's one of the roads that UDOT looked at in the study, and I don't have a slide up for that. We can certainly put it up if we need, but it did include the study in the council packet. It's a road that was considered, because part of the question that the mayors ask UDOT was, well, okay, if, for instance, this particular corridor, although there's others that are storied, studied down the corridor, if that roadway to connect the, you know, the upper bench of Alpine was to run off the hill and connect SR92, does that take the pressure such that this one doesn't need to be improved? The result of the study was, yeah, it will help, but no, it won't be enough. You still need to do the improvements here. Are there any other questions the council has on this? Okay. And just to follow up, Councilmember Smith asked a question about the left-turn lanes from UDOT on Canal. UDOT also has confirmed to me that they are installing left-turn lanes east-west on Tempanogus Highway. So if you're turning from Tempanogus on the North County Boulevard, you'll have a dedicated left-turn arrow or left-turn phase. All of those have been already issued to their crews and their contractors, and just like everything else, everybody's busy, so they can't give me a date. They said hopefully by end of the year on both of those. But no promises, but they're in the work queue and they're coming.
Do you want to just provide a brief update on 6800 West, too?
Sure. Yeah, 6800 West. We are optimistic, hopefully optimistic. Now, verbally, we've been able to work to where we've been able to get a right, it's not signed yet, but we've got a verbal, verbal agreement for right-of-occupancy on the last parcel. We're down to just signing documents, et cetera, with the others, but we're down to the point where we're starting to take active steps while these last couple of signatures come in to begin the process of getting things ready to bid out. We are short on funding, because it's been some time since, you know, projects were funded. In Mountainland's planning, they saved $15 million for this funding round, the funding round with that 6800 West was approved in for contingencies. In, in the most recent, so I, I go to what's called the Technical Advisory Committee, and that's basically all the planning and engineering staff for the various cities. In last Technical Advisory Committee, we recommended approval to the mayors for the first project to dip out of that, which was a couple million dollars to Saratoga Springs. There's still $13 million in contingency. We've told Mountainland that, hey, we're going to get a bid, so we're going to get a bid in December. Our goal is to get a bid just before Christmas. We want to be on your January meeting to get a little bit more money, and then we want to award the contract and start to, start to build in spring. So we feel like, at least from verbal commitments with the property owners, that, that we're there. There are two that have yet to put their name in ink on the line, but because of those commitments, those conversations, we're starting to line up things to go on that schedule. But we are going to have to ask for somewhere in the $700,000 of additional contingency monies. So right now, the project was funded at 2.3 million. Right now, our construction expense alone is 2.3 million, and then, then we've got all the engineering and right-of-way expenses on top of that. But there are funds there, there is a, you know, there's a source of funds, and I'm not getting any resistance, if you will, from the Mountainland staff or the county with regard to asking for those monies. It's just more than, what I've been told is, why don't you get it out to bid, get solid numbers, and then come and ask us with solid numbers.
How soon would you think we'd go out to bid?
Well, we're trying to go out to bid just after Thanksgiving. We're hoping that we can get ink on the lines in the next two weeks, and then go out to bid just after Thanksgiving, get bids just before Christmas, and then go and ask for more money in January, start construction late February, something like that. That's what we're pushing towards. That's the perfect timetable for us, so we'll cross our fingers, it all comes together, but looking good.
Awesome. Anything else?
Just speaking of road bids and things, are we starting to look ahead to next year for road bids? And I just remember going out to bid, it seemed earlier we got better pricing, so...
Yeah, we're working right now to put together the packages for next year. So, yeah, we, we want to, what, this year, our construction drifted a little late. We really didn't want to be that late in the season. So we'd like to be earlier with our construction packages wrapping up earlier, et cetera. Right now, they're out there still raising utility collars, and yet, you know, it could snow next week, you know, and then that's a little bit of a mess when you get that out on the roads, so.
I think it was in Canterbury North earlier, and it seemed like they had a...
Yeah, we've still got some to raise on Canal, they're still working in Canterbury North, they've still got to raise the collars on most of the roads. They left that till late. We've been pushing them very hard, but ties are starting to get very vocal with them right now, because we're getting to where it could get less carried. So, yeah, our goal in this coming year is to be, you know, a step earlier with everything, with bidding, awarding, constructing.
Okay. All right, next slide. This is going to be really short. I am switching now to a request to staff to provide the information that I'd outlined for that committee to provide, help provide, and that is a report on the infrastructure and the ground, and what it would cost to move things around if stuff gets sold, analyzing the property in Wimbledon based on the policies that we currently have in place for open space sales, and, and having a picture of what that looks like, and then working on what are the steps that we could take in the next year to get rid of the ditch. And we don't control that, that's a voluntary thing. And so that is a staff directive now. Unless council would like to add anything to that list, my directive is to have that ready for the new council and mayor by, for a meeting in February. If you're okay with that timeline and those items. Any problems with that? Then we're good. I would like to bring up one more item that I wanted to bring up when we were discussing property disposal, and that is, given the decision that we made, or you made on disposal in the Beacon Hills area where the dry is, to be consistent, you might want to include the property acquisition requests by Brandon Nish and his neighbors, because we denied that, and the reasons that we used to deny it were kind of nullified by what this is new just made on the, on the Beacon Hill Dry Area, they're on Wildfire Lane, so I believe they had had some property boundaries worked out already. I would, I, I think it would be fair for council to ask that that, those boundary requests be reviewed and then be included in the December. Is that, I just, just...
You're talking of the one that was kind of up by the water tower?
Right, just up, it was...
So we denied it because it was a fire?
Because we just didn't want to start taking away from open space because it would set a bad precedent. Well, we set the precedent, and so now I think it would make sense to have that on the list again for discussion, because that was relatively friendly. I think you'd want to make sure that this, that they, just like you asked these Beacon Hill neighbors to work out the internal boundaries. So if, if, that would just be a directive to staff, Kelly. Sorry to add to your workload. It'll be a long time before you can start on the Wimbledon thing, maybe not even before Christmas. Maybe if you're working between Christmas and New Year's, where it's a little bit quieter, you could start on that.
Depends on which Christmas.
Yeah.
Kelly, are you, are you understanding what the request is of staff on, on the one where it was going to be an ad hoc committee, but it's now more staff being directed?
She was the staff member that was on that.
Okay.
Yes, that's, yes. You explained it to me earlier.
So now it's just you and then working with staff.
But I did just a quick clarification on the, like, Brandon Nish and Dave Nibley properties.
They had come with about a request, it's this...
Right.
Right.
Yeah, the one we discussed a week or so ago, but I guess I'm just confused. Do you want me to bring that back to y'all at a future meeting?
I think the request I made was that, and I think council agreed, was bring it back into December with the other...
With the, with the continued properties.
With the continued items.
Okay.
So consider that a continued item.
Okay.
And that involves three or four property owners.
Which, I guess, ugh. That's just another thing to take under consideration with those requests, there are those two property owners that already signed their purchase contracts, and it's basically that settlement is waiting for the properties to the south, like, south of them to be...
This would, might take care of that, because they're having some issues with the property to the south, this might resolve that.
Fair. I just think we might need to reach out to that middle property owner that's between the niche and that.
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That's why I said all property, all potentially impacted property owners, yes.
Okay.
I think we got to be careful, we can't, if one property owner says, oh, I've talked to the neighbor, I think the city needs to make sure they communicate that we hear the information. Does that make sense? That if we have...
Do we hear directly from every resident? We don't rely on...
Yeah, we don't rely on someone telling me, we talked to them, that we've made some form of communication to all the residents.
Yes. Okay, we are at a point where we have our mayor and staff communication items, there's a list of upcoming board and council meetings, commission meetings. Is there anything that staff or council would like to discuss that we have to discuss?
When was the Christmas party for the council decided to be on?
It's either the eighth or ninth. Hey, Tim, you're the only one that hasn't gotten back to me. Can you make...
Hold on, Wednesday or Thursday?
So on Wednesday, I can't be there. On Thursday, Nathan can't be there.
So who do we like more, Mayor or Nathan?
Who do we, like, more mayor or Nathan?
Hey, I'm, I'm happy to do other things.
Unless, there's another day, like Friday or Saturday or the following Monday, that works for people.
Eighth, ninth?
I could do Friday, because we don't do anything fun at Christmas.
If we need to do Friday, I could work through it. Maybe, actually, I say that, hope, and I can, I got to check with my wife.
I, I have done that numerous times, yeah, we can do that, oops.
Like, Friday, the...
It would be the tenth.
Tenth? I can do that.
I can't come on the tenth, but I'm not...
Nope. You can't come on the tenth?
I cannot.
Oh, we can't do it.
I, I've just got to check, there's one little thing on my calendar, I just got to check what it is.
If Saturday would work, or the following Monday, I, it can be sorted out between now and then, as you're just concerned.
I can, I can do Saturday, I'm pretty...
I'm super flexible, except for the eighth, because I, I'm the chair of MAG this year, and that's when we're having our MAG Christmas party, and it's...
So you chose MAG over the city?
I, I planned that before...
Where are you doing at your party?
Uh, we're down in Provo at a restaurant.
Ah, should we just crash it?
With Caravello, I think.
We could just crash their party and consider that ours.
Yeah, that's true.
Now, I want to have one, which is, our parties are fun, our parties are fun.
It's going to be fun.
Nathan's suggesting December first.
Um, that's what day, Monday?
A Wednesday.
A Wednesday? That would work.
Yeah.
Um, I'm open.
Bernie?
Yes, because I have something else I would love to get out of doing on that.
Okay. December first.
I think I can do it.
Yeah.
December first, we're on.
Nathan's the man. Awesome.
Lovely.
I'll see if I can get my booster shot that day, I'm just kidding.
So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mayor, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Question by Kurt? I ask second by Tim, all in favor? Aye. That was unanimous, we are, thank you, those that stayed.